October 27, 2020, meeting of the regular meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. I call this regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wang? Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Commissioner Feng?
Here.
Commissioner Saxena? And Chair Moore?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will begin with item one, approval of the minutes. Subject is the draft minutes of October 13, 2020. Recommended action: approve or modify the draft minutes of October 13, 2020. And I'm going to also give us our COVID-19 speech. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable notice requirements. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to planning@cupidino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission and make them part of the record. So please take a moment to read the draft minutes from October 13. Okay, I move that we approve the minutes from October 13, 2020.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Thank.
Actually, before you do that, I had a comment. There's a line in there, under item three, the general plan review. There was basically a capsule of the discussion, and I think that there's a line in there. There was much discussion about the upcoming Rena numbers and the need for better PR by the city to demonstrate that the city is on track to meet the housing goals for the fifth cycle. I wonder about the flavor of that. I think that I think that there was certainly quick discussion about PR. Whether the actual content of that discussion was the need for better PR for the city to demonstrate the city's on track, I think that that's probably overreach in terms of what the discussion what was the content of the discussion. As an alternative, I'd say that perhaps we should revise that to say there was discussion about the upcoming Rena numbers and and how the city communicates its progress. Which I think is more neutral.
Okay, Commissioner Feng, would you be all right with going with upcoming Rena numbers and the need for better PR by the city and to line out to demonstrate that the city is on track to meet the housing goals for the fifth cycle Rena? Would you be okay to just end the sentence after the word "city"? So it would say-
I think that the issue, I don't think there's an issue with talking about the fact that the city needs to communicate, that that's PR. Whether it's the better PR might be some of the issue.
You don't feel that we were trying to say that we need better PR?
I think that was- Go ahead.
There's just an implication when you use the term "PR" with regard to that it's very political, I guess. And I think what we're looking for is just more of a, you know, this was discussed however, and better communication by the city in terms of, right, meeting those goals isn't kind of suggesting that we care about PR as much as what we're trying to accomplish for the city.
Okay, how about there was much discussion about the upcoming Rena numbers and the need for better communication by the city? And are you okay with to demonstrate that the city is on track to meet the housing goals for the fifth cycle Rena? Just change "PR" to "communication"?
It's debatable whether we're on track or not, but, so I think in line with the with the mission of the Planning Commission, you know, I don't think anybody would argue that the communication, the quality of communication could be better. So I think that that's really to focus on that as opposed to framing it as PR or framing it as a, there was some message we were trying to deliver here. I mean, some of the commissioners felt very strongly that there was a message we should deliver. I'm just not sure that that would be representative of the discussion.
I would disagree there. I think the line of inquiry was, how do we do? How do we do compared to everybody else? Everybody else has done pretty crappy. We're doing much better than everyone else. And why the heck do we not communicate that? That's how I remember that conversation. So to summarize that in a much more kinder way, it's we are not communicating that our progress is better than what other cities have been doing. And we have some commissioners who actually believe that's not the case and are now out there publicly talking about that. And we have a city staff that hasn't had an opportunity to share what we've really been able to do. And so we're facing a public relations nightmare off of false data. And when you compare the data by city, across the city, we're doing pretty well. But not that we're doing well enough for some people, but comparatively to other cities, we're doing pretty well. Yet we're walking around with our heads down. I mean, that's messed up.
Yeah, I mean, if I remember correctly, we didn't have the we didn't even have on the first page how much approval we had and so on. It was all buried later on, and as Vice Chair Wang mentioned, we are on a relative scale doing much better and depending on how-
Commissioner Saxena, you just cut out? He's still cut out. Okay, I was wondering, we'll wait for Commissioner Saxena to return. I was wondering how about this?
You can carry on. I was just seconding what Commissioner Wang was saying.
Interesting. So, okay, so I'm back? That's interesting. Okay. So how about there was much discussion about the upcoming Rena numbers and the need for better communication by the city about our progress to meet the housing goals for the fifth cycle Rena?
I appreciate what Commissioner Feng and Commissioner Takahashi are saying about doing it for the sake of PR value. Let's frame it this way. There was discussion that Cupertino's progress is relatively, when compared to other cities of its size and other cities in California, we could do a better job of communicating how our progress compares with other cities. Would you be okay with that, Commissioner Feng and Commissioner Takahashi, without saying the word "PR"?
Well, getting rid of PR is good. I think that the question is, you know, the measure of your success in complying with the Rena is how many housing permits you've issued. And if we communicate that accurately, we haven't done well, right? We haven't done as well as we have in the past. Generally, Cupertino doesn't do that poorly. We do pretty well on market rate housing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I feel like we're reopening a previous item at this point, and we need to come up with some language that we will agree on for how we best capture what we discussed the last time. So can we focus in on coming up with that language and not reopening what we previously discussed? So find something that we can all, you know, negotiate the sentence.
Yeah, I was fine with your recommended wording, Commissioner Moore.
Okay, so I said there was much discussion about the upcoming Rena numbers and the need for better communication by the city about our progress to meet the housing goals for the fifth cycle Rena. You good with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, okay, so.
And just for the record, I think someone needs to add an "O" to your last name.
Pardon?
Someone needs to add an "O" to your last name, your name.
Oh, he's talking about on the Zoom.
Your last name is spelled M-O-R-E, not M-O-R-E.
I did not do that. All right, I win another "O". Okay, good. Okay, so that's a friendly amendment, I guess. Well, not exactly. This is a correction.
I move that we adopt the minutes as written with the amendment recommended by Commissioner Moore, Chair Moore.
I second. Okay, great. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification there. We'll get that and make those revisions before they're posted. So Vice Chair Wang?
Aye.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Feng?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxena?
Aye.
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Great. We move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on I'm sorry, I do have one phone call listener who has a hand raised. Okay, so I'm going to find out, so do I, Attorney Seth?
Hi. Chair Moore, have you finished announcing the next part of the meeting? Because that seems relevant to this person's.
Okay, so, yes, I did announce oral communications.
Okay.
So I'm going to, this is for oral communications. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go read the oral communications one more time. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda, and I have one hand raised. All right. Jennifer?
Yes, hi, Chair Kitty. I'm sorry, Chair Moore. This is Jennifer Griffin, and I actually have my kitty cat sitting on my lap. Anyway, yeah, I was going to chime in about the Rena numbers before, but we'll just let that go because I don't think the public normally talks during the minutes. But I'm just going to say right now that it has become apparent that some of the housing bill money which Senator Weiner and friends are pumping into California's housing bills has been winding up in Oregon. And it's very, very concerning because it seems to be that it's one thing if California politicians and California PACs that California housing money are doing stuff in California, but it's very, very concerning if they are meddling in politics in another state. And that is what appears to be happening in Oregon. There's a direct influence of money with the HB 2001, which is the fourplex housing bill that got passed in 2019. Senator Kotek in Portland started it, and then the governor signed it in August of 2019. So now you can have fourplexes on any single-family lot all over Oregon, I believe, starting next January. Well, I have talked to people in Oregon that had no idea that this law was even signed. Someone I know actually said verbally to me last week when I was in Oregon, "We never voted on this. What is this law"? I think that we need to make sure that when money is being doled out to continue the Senator Weiner housing bill train, such as I believe Senator Weiner will reintroduce 1120 and 50 again in December, that we're not propagating things into other states where, I mean, why? It's one thing if we're fighting housing battles in California, but it's not our place to pass that on to another state. Let Oregon decide its own housing issues. I really am having a problem with this because it's a slop over. California, there's enough people in California that don't even know what's going on to fund the Senator Weiner housing bill train. Why are they getting involved in meddling in Oregon politics? That has nothing to do with them. So we need to have a discussion about where the money for these housing bills are coming from, how is it being exported into Oregon and Washington State, and why is this happening? I'm very, very concerned about this because we have a whole underground industry of money coming out of suspicious areas that is being-
Please drop off Jennifer.
Sent into our state with nobody knowing what's going on undercover and then into Oregon and slop over into Washington State. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, and did we have any written communications during this time, Madam Clerk?
We received some, an email and some slides, handout material prior to the meeting, and it was requested that I read her statement in at this time.
Okay, so I'll set the clock at three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, let me share my screen. Okay, the email is from Lisa Warren, and she writes, "Dear Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and members, please see attached information that has recently been provided as a response to a public records request. I'm requesting that all eight pages be entered into the record for this evening's Planning Commission meeting. I'm also requesting the city clerk read this message and display the accounting pages as well as the five check images. Further, I request the same eight pages be posted on the city of Cupertino's website under the VAALCO SB 35 project title. The community has continued to be misled by certain residents who repeatedly publish erroneous information claiming that the Friends of Better Cupertino lawsuit unnamed Kitty Moore filed against the city of Cupertino has resulted in over $240,000 of taxpayer money being spent on the lawsuit. These same community members dispute, continue to dispute the facts. The attached details and images were provided by the city and should serve to support those who have been saying all along that the city was protected by indemnification clause written into the development agreement years ago. Each of the five current city Cupertino council candidates was provided the same information yesterday directly by staff. Thank you, Lisa Warren."
Thank you. And are there any other written communications for this time?
No emails have come in.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we close the oral communications and move on to item two, and how is it, there we are. Lots of papers here. Okay, so we move on to consent calendar. We have no items on consent calendar. And we are on to public hearings. Item two, subject: "The modification to use permit U-2011-09 and an architectural and site approval to allow for the installation of two hydrogen refueling dispensers and accessory utility structures. Site improvements and landscaping to an existing gasoline station, BSP Union. Application number M-2020-001, ASA-2020-002. Applicant Kristi Candle of BSP Cupertino Union LLC. Location 21530 Stevens Creek Boulevard, Sessors Parcel Number 25357-20-027. Recommended action: that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing and adopt the proposed resolution to (1) find that the proposed project is exempt from SEQA and (2) approve the project per the draft resolutions. The Planning Commission decision is final unless appealed." And will we begin with the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Moore. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. With us tonight, we have Ellen Yao, the project manager of this use permit in ASA. I'll let Ellen present a brief slide for you guys, and we'll be happy to answer questions. Ellen?
Chair and Commissioners, let me share my screen. Are you able to see everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we are reviewing a project for hydrogen fueling equipment located at 21530 Stevens Creek Boulevard. This is for the permit M-2020-001 and ASA-2020-002. So as you can see on the screen, this is the project site. It is indicated by the outline in red. It's bounded by Stevens Creek Boulevard to the north, State Route 85 to the east, Bub Road directly to the west, and the Southern Pacific Railroad tracks further to the west. This site is currently occupied by an auto service station. And auto service stations, they're permitted with a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. This was approved back in May 2012. They approved the conversion of the service station into the new convenience market. They added 327 square feet to the market. And as part of the approval, they did additional, I guess, uses to that. That included the 24-hour operation of the convenience market that permitted selling alcohol and gasoline concurrently. And they also proposed a 2,580-square-foot office building to the east side of the property. And then in 2014 and 2015, the property owner made some minor modifications, which they came back to the city. We approved the removal of the office component, and so currently, as it sits right now, is landscaping. They included a height increase to entry towers about three inches and a total building height of six inches. They relocated a transformer. And they also did some parking lot adjustments by removing one parking stall located at the rear of the property and three parallel parking stalls to the east side of the parking lot. So if you can take a look, this is an existing aerial. The property has one convenience mart located kind of in the center of the property and two canopies where there are existing gasoline field dispensers. So the applicant is proposing to add two hydrogen fueling dispensers. You can see that on the left side of the image, indicated by the little yellow squares. And then they're also proposing hydrogen equipment. That includes a transformer and a pedestal meter, and that's indicated by the larger rectangle I can see on the right side. And that's the landscape area that was landscaped instead of having an office building. So part of this proposal is to kind of support California's energy commission's intent to deploy and develop different transportation technologies. Hydrogen fuel is an alternative fuel, and they're hoping to provide that to customers and to encourage consumers to choose zero-emission vehicles as alternatives to fossil fuel. This proposal is locating hydrogen fuel dispensers at an existing gasoline station. And so we're specifically reviewing that. I have some renderings from the applicant here. So this is the western canopy, and they are locating the two hydrogen fueling dispensers underneath that western canopy. It's going to be located next to two existing gasoline field dispensers. So this is kind of a rendering of the proposal on that side. And this is a view from Bub Road, and the red arrow is pointing to where the hydrogen equipment will be located. So that equipment structure is, it's kind of proprietary, but they will be designing it and painting it to be consistent with the look of the convenience market. That equipment, as you can tell in the scale of the existing building, it's about 10 feet tall and measures a distance about 13 and a half feet by 35 feet. So that portion will occupy 473 square feet of that landscape area. You can briefly see kind of down there, there's going to be a bollard. So there'll be four removable bollards and then three permanent potted bollards, and they kind of look like that planter box just right below that arrow. And I have one more rendering. This is kind of from the corner of Stevens Creek Boulevard facing east. You have the oaks all the way to the left side of that picture. So this equipment right here is located 62 feet away from Stevens Creek Boulevard and 27 feet away from the eastern property line, which is shared with an office building. That portion is facing the office building's parking lot. And then the equipment's located 23 feet away from the southern property line. So the equipment and the planter boxes will be finished with stucco and painted with colors to match the convenience market. So you kind of see the top portion is a lighter color, and then the base is a darker stone color. So the project proposal also included, after they submitted their first submission of plans, we reviewed it with different departments within the city. Public Works had some requirements that included constructing a five-foot-wide sidewalk along Bub Road. They're also reducing the width of the northwestern driveway. And part of our requirements was that the area that was supposed to be landscaped currently has not been maintained. It's kind of a dirt area, so they are providing re-landscaping to be consistent with their current, with their previous approval, of course, with some modifications to allow for this new scope of work. As part of that as well, when we have a commercial development that is changing their use or doing a complete redevelopment, we do require them to sign onto an easement agreement. This requires a feature reciprocal egress easement, which means that if adjacent property owners also develop, they'll have to kind of coordinate to ensure that there is access between the two properties. This is part of our general plan where we encourage shared property access rather than putting additional traffic on our city streets. So currently, the property, there's 12 existing parking stalls. Nine of them are located in the back and three of them on the eastern side. Right now, the three on the eastern side are parallel parking stalls. And you can see that I've highlighted the area that's supposed to be landscaped. That's in green. And the next slide I'll show you is their proposal on that side of, on that side of the property. So they will be modifying some of their landscaping. The darker color images are for the, they represent the hydrogen equipment, the pedestal, and the transformer. And then you can see that the three parking stalls to the east have been realigned. As part of this proposal, they're also going to install two additional bicycle stalls at the front of the entrance of the convenience market, which they currently do not have any bicycle stalls. As I previously mentioned, they have a landscape area. They will be restoring it back to what they previously were approved for with slight modifications to accommodate for the new scope. The landscaping plants will be low- to medium-water-use plants. And on this property, there is some trees, but they're not proposing to remove them. They will be protected during construction. There will be two city street trees on the eastern side where they will be removed. Our department, Public Works Department, has not required them to replace this. There is simply no room on that side of the property to plant trees also while having that sidewalk built. So we are requiring them to build that sidewalk and allowing them to remove those two city street trees. They're about two inches in diameter, so they're still pretty small. No new lighting is proposed for this property. They have two existing sightlights that are on the western side of that landscape area. Because they have the new parking stalls and the hydrogen equipment, they'll be moving it further to the east, closer to the eastern property line. As part of this review, we will require them to do photometric plans to be submitted as part of their building submission. And as part of the SEQA review, we evaluated that they are exempt from SEQA per Section 15301, 15303, and 15304. We recommend that the Planning Commission find that the project is exempt from SEQA and also to approve the modification to the use permit and architectural and site approval. And this concludes the end of my presentation. We do have the applicant here. If there's any questions as well, and staff is open to questions, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ellen. Okay, so first, were there any ex parte communications from any of the- Okay, so first, were there any ex parte communications from any of the planning commissioners which we need to indicate? No? Okay. And do we have any clarifying questions of Ellen or the applicant? And Commissioner Saxena?
Yeah, I, one of the questions. One was about, I read that they had to put some green space, but it was still like gravel lot. Could you, like somewhere in the staff report? So is that normal that people are supposed to have green space, but they can leave it unlandscaped? Or like what's the what are the responsibilities when that happens?
Yeah, I could take that. You're stating, your question is whether they can leave it unlandscaped, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I read in the thing that said it was supposed to be landscaped, but it was not landscaped. So I have a question about that. So like, how does that happen?
Yeah, I can clarify that. So I mentioned that they got their use permit and then they did modifications. During that modification process, they were, when they decided not to do the office component, they were required to do landscaping. So it is a requirement, it's part of our process. Before we closed out that permit, they had landscaping installed. Since then, it has not been maintained. So that's why that has been brought to our attention, that the landscaping that was approved and was planted and verified before we closed out the permit is no longer there. So as part of this review, we're requiring them to
To maintain it also.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I had a separate question. I wanted to get your input about the safety requirements for an overground tank. From what I understand, these tanks are going to be in that structure, right? They're not going to be underground or is that correct?
Correct, yeah, they're above ground. I think the science behind it, I'll leave it to Kristi, and Kristi can potentially pass along to Dr. Shane Stevens.
Yeah, so I wanted to get a sense of, you know, do we have enough separation from those things? Because they're overground and probably more susceptible to damage or like, you know, some car crashes, then what happens there? So because I have not seen other hydrogen stations. So I don't have a reference point to understand how they're
Yeah, specific on the site plan, I want to cover that there are bollards separating the equipment from the right of, the right of way. The car passage. So there's going to be three removable bollards for them to, for people to access the equipment. And then there's three solid planter boxes that kind of incorporate landscaping to that. So that, that is what is a typical standard for protecting equipment is to install bollards. Just for your reference, there are other cities like Saratoga, Campbell, San Jose, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and Paul Alto as well, they all have hydrogen fuel ones. But this will be the first one for the city of Cupertino.
They're all above ground? Like, is that the standard design for the hydrogen ones? Okay. Because I've used that service station before and it is a sub by those big gas delivery trucks, you know, like the long ones with the cylinders. It's pretty much occupy the entire space when, when they're there. So I was just concerned that it could be a small accident that a thing rolls forward and goes and hit that. And whether like whether the safety requirements and regulations consider those and so on. So that was, that was where I was coming from originally.
That's a very good question. I think specifically, if we, if you'd like to open up the mic to the panelists for them to specifically answer that it, per our requirements and fire, we verify the safety distances for where the equipment's located.
Chair Moore, if it's appropriate, could we entertain some clarification questions from the commission and then open up for applicant presentation and then have that dialogue?
Okay, is, is there a presentation from the applicant? Do, do they have like a 10-minute presentation that they are prepared to share? Or, or would you like us to, you know, let the applicant answer some of our questions regarding the safety issue?
They're here for questions, I don't believe they have a presentation.
Okay, so am I running the, the microphones here to unmute the panelists or is somebody else have that control right now? You know, as you mentioned
I think, I think you have control of not, I believe the panelists can unmute themselves if you introduce them.
Okay, so I'm showing, I've got 20 panelists and you mentioned
Kristi Kendall is from IND Consulting.
Okay, so she appears to be unmuted right now. Kristi?
Yes. Good, good. We did have a brief presentation because hydrogen is a new technology. Dr. Shane Stevens wanted to just kind of give an overview of hydrogen in the market, what we're doing in California. And then we can go ahead and address the commissioner questions from there.
Excellent.
Dr. Shane Stevens. Floor is yours.
Hi, great. Well, thanks so much, everybody. My name is Shane Stevens. I'm one of the founders of First Element Fuel. So we're the developer, owner, operator of this hydrogen station and many others throughout the state. Let me thank Chair Moore for hosting us today, as well as the rest of the planning commission for considering the project. And of course, big things to staff. We juggled a lot of interest from, you know, between us and the city and the landowner. And, you know, we got, I think, a great project that brings, you know, not just hydrogen, but some other good things to, to the station. Ellen has just been fantastic to work with, so appreciate that. So our company is based here in California and we're dedicated to just one thing, which is to provide retail hydrogen to customers for fuel cell vehicles. So today, we own and operate more retail hydrogen stations in California than any other company. With 22 stations open and 30 more under development throughout the state. Our locations range throughout all of California, from San Diego to Orange County and LA. And then we actually have stations connecting up into the Bay Area where we operate eight stations right now. And then we have another station out in Truckee, for those of us that like to drive our, our fuel cell cars out to Lake Tahoe. Now, I'm especially excited to be in Cupertino because this is a location within the Bay Area where customers have especially been clamoring for a hydrogen station because there's a lot of desire for fuel cell cars. The Bay Area, you know, in general, has been a huge success for us, but especially Silicon Valley. So I would encourage, you know, the commissioners to visit some of the nearby hydrogen stations if that's of interest to you. Ellen mentioned where a lot of them are located. And our stations in the Silicon Valley get a lot of use. So we're excited to serve, you know, more customers in Cupertino. So I just briefly provide a little bit of context for our hydrogen station network and fuel cell cars. So you're probably all aware that, you know, California drives the direction of the automobile market for the world in terms of the technology. And for more than 40 years, it's driven that market towards cleaner, less polluting vehicles. You know, starting with a catalytic converter and a lot of other great technologies since. Right now, the vision for the state of California and for the world's leading automakers is to introduce mass volumes of zero emission cars. That's, that's kind of the, you know, the next thing on the horizon. And that was further reinforced just a few weeks ago when the state of California set an aggressive goal that by 2035, all new vehicle sales shall be zero emission. So that's really exciting for us and it means a lot more zero emission cars. And what that means is the one option for zero emissions is plug-in battery cars. That technology has been around a little longer, so a little more well-known. But the other zero emission vehicle technology is fuel cell cars. And those are the only two. So we really have to rely on these technologies to enable zero emission transportation in the state of California. So as Ellen mentioned, we're proud, we're proud to be partnering with the California Energy Commission on this project and also the California Air Resources Board. And bringing the station to the market. We're living through, you know, of course, painful reminders right now of why clean vehicle technology is really important. You know, a lot of air quality challenges with the bad wildfires. And, you know, the increased temperatures due to greenhouse gas emissions, all this is staring us right in the face. So overall, the, the fuel cell vehicle momentum is seeded and it's really growing. Toyota is coming out with its next generation fuel cell car later this month. That car represents a tenfold increase in production volume. And while Toyota is kind of leading the pack, Honda and Hyundai are right there with them. And already selling fuel cell vehicles in California to customers and having a lot of success at doing that. So let me get a little bit into the specifics of the station. I heard some questions about that and I'll go into a little more detail than I was planning, given some of the questions that you guys were asking. So what we're proposing here is a most recent generation offering of our hydrogen station technology with more fueling positions and higher performance. And that's supporting, supporting a growing, you know, movement of hydrogen cars. So we see a necessity to, to scale up. The station technology that we're installing builds on more than two decades of hydrogen station experience. And that spans back to demonstration phases, all the way back, that began in the late 1990s through the 2000s. And then we started deploying retail stations in 2015. And there's a lot of codes and standards that go along with that. So I think to the commissioner's question, we have to meet fire codes. NFPA 2 is usually the one that we're guided by for fire. And then also all of the building codes. That includes a setback, it includes, you know, safety regarding impact, but also in the, safety in the case of, you know, what if, even though you're planning for impact, you get an impact even, you know, beyond what might be typical, right? There are safety measures built into the equipment. So, you know, as Ellen mentioned, we have bollards. But in addition to that, we have fire-rated steel-walled container around everything that's enclosed in the equipment, including the hydrogen storage. So that's a really, you know, thick, strong wall. It would take a really huge impact to penetrate or damage that. But even in the case that we do, the system is built with fail safes so that, you know, hydrogen can safely vent away through a vent stack, through valves that are built into the system if that were to happen. One of the nice things about hydrogen fuel is that it's the lightest substance on earth. So in the case of a leak, it evaporates upward, sorry, it travels upwards very fast at about 44 miles per hour. So it's the fastest and lightest moving substance upward on earth. The other thing that's nice is it's a non-toxic and non-reactive substance. So, you know, we don't want to vent it into the atmosphere because it's valuable. We'd rather fuel cars with it. But if, you know, there is some incident where it's vented into the atmosphere, it's actually perfectly safe to do. In the case that the hydrogen does ignite, right? Because then if you had a leak, venting and an ignition source, it would light. The flame tends to travel upwards. And again, the system is designed to kind of take all, to have safe, safe distances away from nearby buildings, pedestrians in the case that we, that we would get a leak. So I think, you know, if you looked into the detail of it, you would find that the hydrogen stations are actually designed with a much higher level of, of safety and shutdown protocols than what we have with gasoline today or propane or the fuels that we're typically used to working with because hydrogen is newer. So, you know, we're kind of throwing a lot at it in terms of the, the safety elements and the code elements until we get more comfortable with it over the years. So, so, you know, we feel very good about the safety of the station. And of course, we will work closely with the city departments and the local file, fire authority to assure that, you know, we address all safety aspects and it's all permitted. So I'm getting a little bit long-winded here. So let me just say, I've mentioned a few times, you know, that we see a lot of enthusiasm from customers in the Cupertino area for fuel cell vehicles and hydrogen. The demographic there, you know, is environmentally conscious, affluent, forward-thinking about their vehicle choices. So, you know, it's not at all by chance that this area was selected. We're really proud to be playing a role in enabling, you know, these wonderful folks in your community to get behind the wheel of zero emission vehicle technology. And, you know, we're excited to be here. We think this is the next generation of mobility to go to zero emission. And we just, we really hope you welcome us to, to your city. And we're happy to take questions.
Great, we have a question from Vice Chair Wong and thank you, Dr. Stevens. And Vice Chair Wong?
Oh, sorry about that. I'm assuming I'm following the National Renewable Energy Laboratory standards here. But I just have a question because I remember driving by and I just wasn't sure where the overhead electrical wires were. Because that's still overhead over there. I don't know if those are telephone wires, if they're electrical wires. And if you're properly, is there enough distance behind that? So I just want to make sure that we're following those distance regulations. And then the second question was really about proximity to other types of ignition sources. Because I think being where those are, I think there might be like one or two other sources. And I couldn't tell from the, from the site map or the plan set, if those, if those sources have been moved or not.
So with regard to overhead electrical lines, there are codes and standards for the separation distances to those. And I don't recall exactly on that site, you know, where they are, but, or if they're overhead or if those are telephone lines. But we, of course, have designed the system to meet those separation distances.
So they'll have NFPA 2 and IFPC as well?
Yes, correct.
I see, sorry, I see.
Yes, correct. The, I'm not sure what you mean by ignition sources. So perhaps you could further clarify that, that question?
I wasn't sure if there's electrical equipment nearby. With like a small transformer, I have to go back and take a look.
Oh, yes. And actually, we have to install a transformer for, for our system. So yes, there will be that nearby. And of course, same thing, right? There are setback distances and codes and we are meeting all of those in our design. And, you know, and if we're not, by the way, the fire department will tell us and we'll have to move them. So, but
No, no, I'm sure they will. And the emergency response protocols are in place for our fire departments as well? Do they have those?
Yes, they, they should have those. And if it's desired, we will actually go through training sessions with fire departments. We've done that in multiple cities in the Bay Area. So I believe, I'm going off the top of my head here, but I believe that the Cupertino Fire Department has been engaged in a lot of educational sessions already. But, you know, as we go through the permitting process of they feel it would be helpful, we, we will happily conduct a session with them, so.
Do any other commissioners have some questions of the applicant? All right. Not seeing any hands raised. I have a quick question. You mentioned vehicles, just regular cars that would be able to use the station. Would you happen to know, Dr. Stevens, what the horizon is for trucks that would be hydrogen-powered?
Yeah, we Yeah. Yeah, there are no on-road hydrogen trucks today, but we do see a lot of enthusiasm in that area. So, you know, Hyundai, Nikola, Heizon, Toyota is, is teaming up with a big truck maker, if I can't remember the name of, but that's, that's to name a few. We don't expect heavy-duty trucks to be using this station. You know, similar to a retail gas station, there are truck stops that are designed to have, you know, the retail side and the heavy-duty side because it's hard to fit a truck into the retail side. So this is really designed and targeted towards passenger vehicles. I think there's a further kind of protection there as well. You know, like if you were worried that, or a heavy-duty car is going to come use this. The protocol, you know, to actually be able to fill a vehicle, you know, the station, the dispenser has a computer system in it, which allows you to fill the vehicle is designed for a tank size of a car. Like it wouldn't even be able to fill the tank size of a truck. So, you know, if a truck came to use it, it wouldn't be able to, even if it, if it wanted to, so.
Okay, and the, the range on these vehicles, I was reading around 300 miles, is that about right?
Yes, yeah, the range is from about 300 to, you know, I'm, I'm driving the Hyundai Nexo right now and I get about 370 on it. So, yes.
Okay, great. All right, are there any further questions from the commissioners before we open it up for a public comment? Commissioner Saxena?
Yeah, so I, I just want to understand why we go with above-ground tanks versus underground tanks.
So in fact, the fire code right now is easier to do with above-ground tanks. So there's not a lot of examples in the US of underground tanks. So it would be sort of pushing the limits of the code and what's done. You know, we do have instances in Europe where tanks are starting to go underground. And I think we will get there eventually in the United States as well. You know, but frankly, you know, right now, fire code dictates that above-ground is safer for hydrogen. And, you know, like I said, I think we'll get there and it will be just as safe to go underground. But today, this is the way that, that is actually a, an easier, more straightforward way to get the, to meet the fire code.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? All right, at this point, we will open it up for public comment. Each individual has three minutes. I have two hands raised. The first is Jennifer. Jennifer, are you there?
Yes, hi Kitty, thank you. I, this is fascinating about the hydrogen. It is ironic, and you all may not be aware that just barely 1,000 feet from there in 1981, several malathion tanks exploded in the highway 85. 85 had not been built at the time and there was just a grass field. I was at Deans College when the tanks exploded because they had been running helicopters spraying for fruit fly. And that was a major, it rocked Deans College. The windows almost exploded in the library. I, I, I think it's very important that you all remember and realize that what happened in that area that area, it's very, very close to that site. Of course, it has nothing to do with it. But I appreciate the fact that the commissioners were asking about the safety stability of the hydrogen tanks. Of course, these are above-ground. I do use a station in Saratoga that has, I believe, the hydrogen tanks are in the back. And there are trucks that go in there. But I would be concerned, and I'm glad that the commissioners did ask these questions, if those hydrogen tanks were run into accidentally, if somebody went through the bollards, what would we expect to happen? You know, I was a chemistry major. I'm certainly familiar with hydrogen, helium, et cetera. But this is a new technology, and it is starting to go in areas around the state. But I do think that the public needs to understand what would happen? What if there was a major earthquake? Okay? You know, go back and take a look at what, why the malathion tanks exploded. That was a major incident in Cupertino history. I think it's very important, because the memory of that is in the local people there. I sat on that bus bench in front of the Oaks for nearly three hours waiting for a bus, because they had to evacuate Deansa College. So yes, I'm sure that the hydrogen technology is the latest, et cetera. We probably just need to have the discussion so that the public is aware why the tanks are above-ground. Is it safer to have them below grounds? Is there danger from movement from an earthquake? What is, what happens if we have a 7.0 earthquake? Do you have a fail-safe shutdown for the station, et cetera? I don't want there to be a hydrogen bomb problem in Montevista in Cupertino. Yes, this is new technology, but we have to make sure that everything is being done to make sure that Cupertino is secure. Because California has earthquakes, and they have, I mean, why did those malathion tanks explode? And that was a major incident. I suggest that people who own the station and then people that are running the hydrogen tanks go back and take a look at what happened barely 1,000, 2,000 feet from this station. I lived through it. And it was one of those incidents that I will remember like the 1989 earthquake. Thank you.
Unmute myself. Okay, next we have Rose Grimes. And thank you, Jennifer. Rose? You're unmuted. Rose, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, Rose. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. So I'm actually here to talk a little bit later about the dark skies issue. But I saw that this was on your agenda and was very interested, because I had a hydrogen car up until recently. I think we turned it in back in February. So I'm familiar with the fueling technology and in general, the technology for the cars. So I had a couple of comments for you and the developer to take into consideration. On that corner, cars are not supposed to be able to make a U-turn on Stevens Creek, but it happens. And so that creates potential for accidents. I've seen that happen there. So cars who want to go and get hydrogen and think that by making a U-turn, they'll be able to enter the station in an advantageous way to have their tank and nozzle positioned in the same way. Because these hydrogen dispensers, unless this design is different, only dispense on one side. So you have to orient your car so that you're able to obviously put the nozzle into your car. And there are no two options for a single dispenser. So you have one-way flow. And I think, as I saw the plans, the hydrogen dispensers are going to be additional to some traditional gasoline dispensers under the same canopy. So the amount of time that it takes to fill a hydrogen tank is also significantly different. So you'll have the gas cars that pull in behind the hydrogen cars wanting to leave sooner, significantly sooner. So they'll be potentially backing up to leave out of that driveway. And so the traffic flow is something that I think is a concern. It's my experience as a hydrogen car owner, that traffic flow in those stations can often be really confusing and counterintuitive. And when there were shortages back in November, December, there were often repeatedly, and this shortage lasted for maybe three or four months, so it was a significant inconvenience, there were often four and five cars at a station that had hydrogen fuel available, waiting to fuel up. And so figuring out how they were going to line up and how you could take turns, to be fair to everybody. And my experience was that the gas station operators didn't have any control over that or knowledge of it. And so it was left to the drivers themselves to figure out how to be fair to each other and how to keep your place in line. So I have a concern on that corner. And with the arrangement of those dispensers, how that's going to be safe and not lead to additional traffic problems. I'll let it go.
All right. Thank you, Rose. So we have a couple of questions. One regarding the earthquake safety, and then regarding the vehicle timing and safety of those, the configuration that we have there. So would someone from the applicant's team like to address these questions?
Thanks, Chair Moore. Dr. Shane Stevens here again. I may also ask my COO, Gassan Sleman is on the phone, who has a one or two levels deeper technical capabilities than I do on this. So I may ask him to weigh in support here. So to the first question, thank you for the history on the malathion tanks. I certainly was not familiar with that, but we will certainly go take a look at that. And then I think to address your other concerns, we are approaching this with what I think is the, what we believe is the safest installation that we can do. So the above-ground versus below-ground, in terms of where the technology is today, this above-ground installation, we believe, gives us the safest approach. The equipment is earthquake-rated, so it can withstand earthquakes. But of course, you always want to be prepared for the what-if scenario, right? So in a what-if scenario, if there is any hydrogen leak detected, or any heat detected from something that may be overheating or catching fire with the system, everything shuts down into fail-safe mode on that station. So it's automatic. It can also be shut down into fail-safe mode telemetrically. And then there's also several e-stops at the equipment, at the dispenser, and around the property to shut down the station into fail-safe mode. What that also means is that the station is designed so that if you have a leak or some kind of release of hydrogen, the station is designed so that it will be routed through a vent stack to release in a part of the property that is safely far away from surrounding buildings and high enough to offer safety distances away from passersby, pedestrians, vehicles on the property as well. So I think, again, for kind of normal operations, earthquakes that could be pretty severe, cars and trucks traveling at, I think usually, on the site of a gas station, the speeds are going to be pretty limited, right? So for those kind of speeds, the station is designed to withstand that impact. But of course, we do design the system as well to withstand kind of much bigger what-if scenarios if something really extraordinary were to happen to the equipment. So with that, let me just pause for a minute and ask, Gassan, is there anything that I missed that you think that you can weigh in on to shed some light on this?
I think you covered it, Shane, really well. In addition, if we have a 5.0 earthquake or higher, the station will shut down. And to give you an idea of the strength of these tanks, they're, of course, they're double-walled, vacuum-insulated with malar in the interstitial space. One of these tankers that hold liquid hydrogen in the past 10 years actually rolled over on the freeway, and it did not rupture any of the tanks. So these tanks are really well-built for the application.
Great. Thank you, Gassan. So I think, let me go to the second caller's questions, if that's okay, and then maybe I'll pause there. So, yes, so first of all, thank you for embarking on the experiment of driving a fuel cell car. That's great. And I think what you'll see is that what we're deploying here is actually a generation of technology beyond the first generation. So I think many of the experiences that you referred to, it sounds like you were filling at a first-generation hydrogen station, Rose. You know, one fueling position. We did have some supply disruptions because of the supply chain that takes hydrogen to those specific stations. So this station represents the next generation of technology. There's actually four fueling positions as opposed to one. So we are doing that to minimize the kind of lines that we were seeing at some of the one-fueling-position stations. The dispensers are two-sided, so the cars can pull up on either side. So hopefully, that will minimize some of the people jockeying and U-turning. It's not just on one side of the dispenser, they can actually access both. So depending on which side of the vehicle the fuel door is in, that gives the customers a little bit more flexibility. And the equipment is higher performing, so the fills should happen faster. I think typically, the fills at our first-generation stations were five minutes, and on some very hot days, they can take six or seven minutes. Heat influences that. So that's a little bit longer than the gasoline fills. But at these stations, we anticipate every fill to take fewer than five minutes, probably even fewer than four. So I think everything that you said, Rose, is familiar to us. And this set of equipment that we're installing here represents a learning from some of the downsides and negative experiences that you had trying to address that, and I think it will in this new generation of equipment. So thank you for raising those. And we heard you, we hear you, and we're trying to do better on all those things with this set of equipment that we're installing.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we receive any public comments during this presentation that we need to hear?
No, we didn't receive any emails.
Okay. So at this point, we have closed the public comment period, and we are on to our deliberations. And we can make a motion on this item and then discuss it. We want to do it that way.
Actually, I'd like to ask the applicant one other question, if I could. I'm just curious, do you operate any, is your company operating any stations in this area?
Yes, so we operate stations in Saratoga, Campbell, two stations in Campbell, actually. Station in Sunnyvale, and a station in San Jose. And then it's getting a little further out, but we have one in South San Francisco, so further up the peninsula, and then one over in Hayward, one over in Fremont, one in Oakland. So that's kind of our, I think that's all of our Bay Area network where it stands right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. So do we have any further questions from the commissioners? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion on this item?
I'm happy to make a motion to support this.
All right.
I'll second.
Well, okay, so I think we
You want to read the specifics?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
So we have two. We have M 2020-001, and we have the ASA Architectural Site Approval ASA 2020-002. I think we can take these both separately, if you want to do it that way.
There's also the, find the project exempt from CEQA.
Right, that's in both of them, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So who's making the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft resolution for M 2020-001. We'll skip the other one separate, I guess, if you want to do it that way, or are you trying to do all three at once?
Actually, we recommend that we do all that once. I mean, they're related, right? You can't really have a use permit if you're not going to approve the site modifications.
Draft resolution for ASA 2020-002, and the approved landscape plan from DIR 2015-25.
Second the motion.
I have a question on that, so that I believe we also need to find that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the CEQA Guideline Section 15301, 15303, and 15304. And that we are approving the application for the modification to use permit application number M-2020-001, subject to the conditions which are enumerated in this resolution, beginning on page four. And that we're also finding that the application number ASA-20-002 is exempt from CEQA Guideline Section 15301, 15303, 15304, and that the proposal is consistent with the purposes of Chapter 19.168, the general plan, any specific plan, zoning ordinances, applicable plan development permit, conditional use permits, variances, et cetera, per page two of the draft resolution. Can we add that to the motion?
Exactly as Chair Moore has stated. That's perfect.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Actually, I just wanted to comment as part of the deliberation. First of all, I like the project. I think it's a really interesting, really interesting addition of technology. When the Marai was first introduced, I went for a test drive. Really didn't really love it that much, but loved the idea. So, and it's funny, just yesterday, I got a flyer for the new Hyundai fuel cell car. So glad to see this is happening, glad to see that you're bringing this to town. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Fang. Would any of the other commissioners like to make some comments on this project?
Sure, I'll go next. Yeah, I definitely agree with Commissioner Fang in terms of it's definitely a good thing to see progress for the city in developing alternative fuel sources. As the mandate by the governor gets, man, that's 15 years from now, but that seems like a long time. But in reality, it's really not that long from the standpoint of new car sales. But having an option to all-electric, I think, is a good thing. I think there's a school of thought that is most applicable to long-haul trucking as an option. But alternative fuels are definitely a positive. And from a gas station standpoint, adopting hydrogen probably is more consistent with their business model. So anyway, I support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Takahashi. Commissioner Saxina, I see your hands raised.
Yeah. I also wanted to say that with the zero-emission mandates coming down the line, it's good to have the hydrogen thing coming here. I think the location is awesome. It's right off 85 and 280. So even people who are commuting longer distances can come and use it without having to hit too much of the city streets. So that's a good spot to have the station. And I'm actually looking forward to the U.S. actually developing standards for underground tanks also, because it will hopefully help mitigate a lot of the concerns which were raised here. So, thank you.
Okay, and Vice Chair Wong?
Oh, yeah. I mean, look, we've got about somewhere between 8,000 to 9,000 hydrogen cars in California. And just like the electrification that's required for electrical stations, we definitely need fueling stations for hydrogen fuel cars. And I don't think there may be enough, given that it's such a small number at the moment. But it's good to at least put that infrastructure in and get ahead of it. So I think it's a smart move. And so on, it's safe, and that we're meeting all the applicable guidelines.
Great, thank you. And I agree with all of the comments from the other commissioners. I'm excited that Cupertino is having its first hydrogen fuel cell station, and I look forward to having truck traffic, especially that on Foothill one day, either being electric or hydrogen fuel cell electric. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wong?
Vice Chair Wong?
Aye.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxina? Okay, and Chair Moore?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Real quick here, Seth, do we need a verbal confirmation from Commissioner Saxina? Or the thumbs up is good enough?
Yes, again, I'm back again, so.
Oh, perfect, thank you. I was gonna say, we're in uncharted territory, so we got visual. Thank you.
Excellent, all right.
He's breaking ADA laws.
Thank you, everybody, we look forward to it.
Okay, thank you, Stevens, thank you, everyone. Great, so we're moving on to item three, subject, consider the municipal code amendments to update existing mobile vending regulations, including but not limited to regulations in Chapter 5.48 and potential conforming edits to other chapters in the municipal code, including, hold on one moment. There we are. And I got to the word including in Titles 5, 11, 13, and 19, and adopting new policies and definitions regulating mobile vendors. Application number MCA-2020-004. Applicant, the City of Cupertino, location, citywide. This is postponed from the October 13, 2020 meeting. Recommended action, that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution recommending that the city council, one, find that the proposed actions are exempt from SEQA, and two, adopt an ordinance to make municipal code amendments related to new and amended regulations related to sidewalk and motorized mobile vendors. Tentative city council hearing date is December 1, 2020, and we'll begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Moore, for that perfect introduction, you made my job a lot easier. I would just introduce the staff we have here today. It's a collaboration between the Economic Development Division, as well as the Planning Division within Community Development. We have Angela Swaye, the Economic Development Manager. Follow up the presentation by Angela will be Ellen Yao and Jeffrey Sumora are associate planners. With that, Angela, you're up.
Excellent, thank you Director Fu, good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners of Angela Swaye, Economic Development Manager. And I will go ahead, and if you permit me to share my screen, we'll begin the presentation. Here we go. So this evening, I will just, we'll be discussing just a brief background on Cupertino's Economic Development Strategic Plan, and this was the impetus of the ordinance. SB 946, the statewide requirements, and then mobile vending ordinance, the existing policies that we have and proposed updates to our municipal code. So the EDSP is a multi-year plan. It is somewhat of a blueprint of how to best position the city's economic future. And when developing this EDSP, we take a number of things into account, regional and local economic trends, employment, industries, businesses. We also take into account retail trends of our local economy, the business community's impact on the city's overall fiscal health, and then opportunities for maximizing the value and strengths of our current businesses. And then the EDSP also provides implementation strategies for us and with our partners. And those partners include locally and regionally, but most locally, it would be our Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Silicon Valley SBDC, which is our Small Business Development Center. Our city council adopted the EDSP in October of 2016. Mobile vendors regulations were seen as a key point due to the growing popularity and the increased reliance of food trucks and other mobile services. And again, you can see how this is important, especially now, given the shelter in place and just health orders. And then mobile vendors regulations and standards was included as part of city council's Fiscal Year 2021 work program. In addition, the state adopted SB 946, which went into effect on January 1 of 2019, and that established requirements for local regulations of sidewalk vending. And again, we'll go into a little bit more detail, but the sidewalk vending really are the stationary or the push carts versus the motorized, which we will also be discussing this evening. And then it's necessary for the city to be able to conform and comply with SB 946 changes to our existing municipal code. And the purpose of the vendors ordinance and the updates really are to address three main issues. The first, to conform with SB 946. And in order to conform, we have to update the terms that the city uses in its existing municipal code of solicitors and peddlers. Regulate motorized vendors in the public right of way and on private property to, again, address the evolving nature and popularity of these types of businesses. And then to establish a process and regulations for how the city can regulate these types of uses and properly enforce for compliance. And then, just to give you some idea of kind of the rationale behind how we created the framework and the questions, again, we were trying to answer, one of which is to comply with the California Vehicle Code. And again, we can, we'll be going into that a little bit more in detail. To prevent motorized vendors in parks unless associated with a park event. To address the emerging business models of by appointment services, so these would be vendors, excuse me, going to residences by invitation. And here you see one example is dog groomers or pet groomers. To reduce conflict with existing nearby brick and mortar establishments. To streamline the process, to allow the presence of these types of businesses and uses on private non-residential property. And the example would be for business locations for their employees. And then importantly, to maintain the residential character of neighborhoods from commercialization and additional traffic and noise that these types of vehicles can bring due to lengthy presence and just being a motorized vehicle. And just, here's the summary of kind of our outreach and the timeline. In August, we held two outreach meetings, one specifically to our business community, one was to the community, just residents or just the community at large. We gave a presentation and engaged the chamber at their Chamber LAC meeting. Tonight, we are coming before you at Planning Commission, and I apologize, I would have to update this slide that it would go to council in December. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ellen Yao to discuss SB 946.
Thank you, Angela. Right, so for SB 946 was a state law that was passed, and the legislature found that the sidewalk vending provides entrepreneurship and economic development opportunities. And they wanted to have regulations to contribute to an active and dynamic public space, but to ensure that, you know, health and safety and welfare concerns, such as where you can do it, when you can do it, and how you can do it is regulated. So the next couple of slides are specifically what has been passed through SB 946. Angela, if you can go back one slide?
Oh.
Yeah, so for sidewalk vendors, SB 946 defines it as a person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart, stand, display, pedal-driven cart, specifically just non-motorized conveyance, and they can do this on a public sidewalk or any pedestrian path. Next slide, please. SB 946 also defines two different types of sidewalk vendor. One is stationary, one is roaming. A sidewalk, stationary sidewalk vendor is one that moves from place to place and stops only to complete a transaction. Oh. That's slightly reversed. So a stationary sidewalk vendor is one that vents from a fixed location and they set up, and then at the end of the day, they will clean up and remove their vending facility from that location every day. A roaming sidewalk vendor is one that moves from place to place, and they only stop to complete a transaction. So these are two subcategories under the larger sidewalk vendor definition under SB 946. Next slide, please. SB 946 specifies that there are certain things that local jurisdictions can do and cannot do. And so if you look at this chart here on the left side, there are specific things that we aren't allowed to do. First of all, you can't prohibit sidewalk vending. SB 946 says that local jurisdictions have to allow for sidewalk vending. We also can't limit the number of total vendors in a city. So you can't say, we're going to only allow 100 mobile vendors or 50 mobile vendors in the city. We also can't prohibit roaming sidewalk vendors from exclusively residential areas. You can't prohibit stationary sidewalk vendors from parks unless a park has a concession agreement with an exclusive partner. And we also can overly restrict hours of operation in areas that are not exclusively residential. Those are things that we're not allowed to do, but SB 946, like I said, does allow for us to regulate things for health and safety and welfare concerns. So we are allowed to make sure that there are sanitary standards, that the location of the facilities and the people who are operating, they meet ADA requirements, and if they're serving food, that the preparation of those consumable products meet standards as well. And as we will discuss, we will be requiring a registration and a business license, and that is what is allowed under SB 946. Next slide, please. So we're going to break it down by two major sections. The first one is, well, what kind of type of vendors are we reviewing as part of this ordinance update? What about the locations, the hours of operation, the duration that they can operate, and how long they can stand not moving when they're doing their transaction? And then also prohibited locations for mobile vendors. Next slide, please. So this is a representation of what's permitted for sidewalk vendors. This is required by SB 946. There are three major categories for locations. So sidewalk vending for SB 946 is called the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. So it allows for vending from sidewalk and public right of ways. So that's why we've broken it down to sidewalks for exclusively non-residential, exclusively residential, and parks. Stationary is allowed on sidewalks and on private property for exclusively non-residential. So in the city of Cupertino, would be along Stevens Creek or anywhere that's not specifically like R1 residential. The next one is exclusively residential. You wouldn't be seeing a stationary vendor in the Rancho neighborhood where they're single-family homes. And then parks, like I said before, it is allowed if the park, you know, if the park has concession contract from another party, then it's not permitted. And then for roaming, it's permitted on sidewalks all across for exclusively non-residential, exclusively residential, and parks, which means if you're a roaming vendor, you can walk on sidewalks in residential neighborhoods and non-residential neighborhoods and within parks, because they're moving around. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, can you go back one slide, just want to specify. For exclusively residential, SB 946 doesn't say that stationary vendors are prohibited on sidewalks, but this is a slight change that we have included in our code. And we'll go over some of the reasonings why. Very briefly, our sidewalks in residential are generally about five feet wide. I'm going to go over some of those standards later on, and it does specify that you still have to keep sidewalks open. And so based off of the findings that the state has said, you know, if it's going to cause any safety concerns, we can prohibit that, okay? So that's, you know, the initial chart that I had is what we can and cannot prohibit or regulate. This is one that we could if we find that there are concerns. So even though it's not required by SB 946 that states that's prohibited on sidewalks and exclusively residential, we have made that change so that no stationary sidewalk vendor can set up their facility in those residential neighborhoods. Thank you, next slide. Okay, and then we go over some of the hours and duration for sidewalk vendors. Again, this is not specifically required by SB 946, but it does allow us to establish the time and the location. So I talked about the time, the location, and now I'm going to talk about the time and duration. So again, I've broken it down to exclusively non-residential, exclusively residential, and parks. And then within the non-residential and residential, there are sidewalks and private property. We've established hours for sidewalks as 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. for stationary and roaming and exclusively non-residential. SB 946 does state that in certain areas where, well, typically in our general commercial areas, we allow for business to operate from 7:00 to 11:00. So we can't restrict hours more than what that area is permitted to do. So that means stationary and roaming vendors, when they're operating on sidewalks or on private property, they have the same hours. So you can see under exclusively non-residential, it's the 7:00 to 11:00, just like any other properties can within that area. For exclusively residential, in the chart, it specifically says non-applicable for those that I've already covered in the location. For sidewalks within residential properties, it's 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That is similar to what we would kind of permit for noise in our residential neighborhoods. So those are the hours based off of our community noise ordinance. And then for park locations, you can operate a mobile vending facility during the hours that the park is open. And then you'll see under the time for each of the roaming, they have a limitation of up to 15 minutes maximum for any transaction. And so the difference between a stationary and roaming is that roaming, you can walk, and then you can stop for your transaction, and you're supposed to, you can not move and be stationary for the time that it takes you to complete the transaction, but not to exceed 15 minutes. Next slide. And then I'm going to pass this off to Jeff Sumora to go over motorized vendors.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Yeah, so in addition to the sidewalk vendor regulations that you just heard from Ellen, we also wanted to take this opportunity with this item to address motorized vendors. So as you can see here, we've further broken down motorized vendors to different types, motorized food vendors, motorized service vendors, and motorized good vendors. So the food vendors, they're going to be your typical food trucks. Service vendors, as Angela had touched on, are kind of those emerging businesses within mobile vendor space that includes like mobile dog groomers, as you see here. Could also be like mobile barbers and mobile dental. And then goods vendors, and that's also relatively new, that's like mobile boutiques or florists. And next slide, please. So in terms of proposed locations, you see here that one commonality among these three types is that they're all allowed on public streets, and then, of course, subject to hours of operations and duration, similar to sidewalk vendors. And I'll touch on that in the next slide, but as you can see here, also, the main difference is that motorized food vendors will be allowed on exclusively non-residential private property. So that's sites like shopping centers, office parks. And motorized service vendors will be allowed on exclusively residential property. So those are like residential driveways or apartment parking lots. And under the parks column, they are permitted only as part of a city-sponsored event. Next slide, please. For proposed hours, they're going to vary depending on the location in the city, with exclusively residential areas being a little more strict than non-residential, just because of the nature of residential neighborhoods. And all vendors are subject to those set durations at any given time, mainly that they're limited to the duration required to complete the transaction for service vendors, in this case, to provide the service. So all vendors are limited to 15 minutes at a time on any public street. Food vendors are allowed up to three hours on a site within any 24-hour period on private property. Service vendors are allowed up to two hours in any 24-hour period on a private property. Next slide, please. So prohibited locations, I'm just going to try to brush through these real quick, it's a lot. So natural dirt, sand, or grass areas, program spaces for operation. And next one, any vacant Um and next one, uh any vacant and undeveloped properties. Uh upon any sidewalk within ten feet of no parking zone or um uh no parking time i- if that's in effect. Um adjacent to um fire, life, or safety elements such as uh fifteen feet, um uh can you, next one? Uh within fifteen feet from fire hydrant or a public safety alarm box, or uh one hundred feet from corner triangles or driveway clearance triangles. Uh within twenty-five feet for sidewalk vendors from any public transit bus stop or loading zones, or a hundred feet for motorized vendors. Within twenty-five feet of another mobile vendor. Uh within five hundred feet of the nearest property line measured along public streets uh upon which a school is located, and then during school hours and one hour before and after uh class hours. And then finally, uh on private property, except at the invitation of the property owner. Next slide. And then um. Okay, so um for any mobile vendor, uh up to three vendors uh may be located on individual private property as an accessory. So I'm really quickly of the slide before uh uh I just wanted to address that we're gonna be talking about additional standards, additional proposed standards, um touching on the registration process, uh and then talking about some of the uh businesses that are um exempt from this uh mobile vending ordinance. Okay, um so one of those additional proposed standards are um uh mobile vendors as an accessory use. Uh what does that mean? It means that uh up to three vendors can be located on a uh individual private property um and then as an accessory use. And we are uh adding a conforming edit to our accessory uses and uh buildings slash structures chapter um to reflect that language. Next slide. Uh this table shows the size standards broken down for um both sidewalk vendors and motorized vendors. For sidewalk vendors, um the vending area is uh up to nine by nine. Um and this is to accommodate a vending facility up to eight feet in length, uh and five feet in width and height. And they're allowed an umbrella uh as long as it's open on all four sides, up to eight feet. And motorized vendors um uh can have a vending facility up to twenty feet in length, nine feet in width, and twelve feet in height. Canopies or umbrellas are not permitted. Next slide. And um in terms of obstruction of traffic or trying to minimize obstruction of traffic, sidewalk vendors um shall not impair free flow of traffic on sidewalks. Um they do need to maintain at least one half of the sidewalk width, um so at least four feet to be kept unobstructed at all times. And uh no lines, banners, ties, or any part of the facility shall be connected to public or private structures. Uh and motorized vendors uh shall not obstruct the driveways or sidewalks and complies with designated parking regulations and conducts business entirely within the motor- motorized vending facility. So they must park in a uh a legal parking spot. Um and then the same, um they can't um that no lines, banners, ties, or any part of the facility uh can be connected to public or private structures. Next slide. So um a few other additional proposed standards, um they shall be direct retail sales and services only. Um no signs, flags, or banners attached to or on a separate structure, um except if it's painted on the facility itself. Um uh these vendors shall provide at least one trash receptacle, and they cannot be emptied out in um publicly available trash receptacles. Uh they are not allowed to use device uh devices to produce noise uh or attract attention such as loudspeakers, horns, bells, et cetera. Um no glass containers uh are allowed to um be used to uh dispense those items. Um motorized vendors are only allowed on the paved parking areas. They only occupy one space, and they cannot displace any of the minimum required parking. And finally, they must maintain clean area and facilities, and um they need to remove the um uh the trash uh completely daily. Uh next slide, please. And then these uh last standards just refer to kind of compliance with existing chapters of the code. So um they're just in reference to waste, noise, smoke, single-use plastic bags and food service wares, and those are the relevant chapters that they refer to. And next slide. Oh, that's it, okay. Um and really quickly touching on the uh proposed process. Uh so as mentioned earlier, um these mobile vendors would be required to uh obtain a business license uh for within the city. They would uh register and be approved as a mobile vendor. And this is gonna be on an annual basis, um along with an annual registration fee. Uh registration is non-transferable, and um registration may be revoked after a notice and hearing for non-compliance and repeated violations. And I am going to turn it back over to Ellen.
Thank you. So we're gonna go over exemptions. So we talked about everything that's allowed. We covered uh sidewalk vendors and motorized vendors, and within sidewalk vendors, we have stationary and roaming. Okay, hopefully you got all of that. Uh the exemptions are things that do not require a mobile vending permit. That is not um, they are exempt from these regulations that we went over in the last uh slides. So if you are doing uh delivery, uh food delivery um from a store or to another location, uh such as, you know, regular pizza delivery or Grubhub or DoorDash, you are not required to get a mobile vending registration with our city. Uh solicitors also do not fall under mobile vending uh ordinance. We have a separate solicitors from uh process that's already existing in our code. Um so they are exempt from this. Uh there's catering, so if you're doing catering for business, uh if you're doing maintenance services at a property. So if you are hiring someone to do gardening, you know, even if they're driving their car, um they're not considered mobile vendors, so they're exempted. And then any outdoor sales and promotional events such as uh, you know, any church fairs, things like that, um special events and festivals, they are exempted from applying for a mobile vending uh registration. Next slide. And then we also made conforming edits to the other chapters, uh chapter five point oh four, chapter eleven point two eight, chapter thirteen point oh four, and chapter nineteen point one hundred. And these are just conforming edits just to to clarify uh any of the regulations that we've made in mobile vending and make sure there's consistency across the municipal code. Next slide. And we reviewed it uh as exempt from CEQA based off of section fifteen three seventy-eight and fifteen oh six one, which specifies that uh there's no physical change in the environment in terms of development. So uh we're fa- it's found that there's no possibility of a significant effect on the environment. Next slide. We did public noticing and outreach briefly mentioned by Angela at the beginning of the presentation. Uh we're required to do a agenda and public noticing of this hearing. Um so this project and this hearing is in compliance with those regulations. Next slide. Recommended action uh is to conduct a public hearing and adopt draft resolution recommending that the city council find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA and to adopt the ordinance to make in municipal code amendments uh related to the new regulations and amended regulations to sidewalk and motorized mobile vendors. Thank you. Thank you, and that concludes our presentation, and we are open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Angela, Ellen, and Jeff for the presentations. Do we have some questions from the commissioners? I see uh Commissioner Saxena, you have your hand raised.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um I might have misread it, but remember somewhere saying that the uh motorized are not allowed on commercial property? Is that true or did I misread something?
So the motorized, the way we have it set up is motorized food would be allowed on um on private property, non-exclusively non-residential. And uh motorized services would be allowed on exclusively residential properties to serve those residences.
Okay, so a food truck can't be in a non-residential area with that?
It it could be allowed on public streets.
Okay, but uh they can't uh go into a Walmart parking lot or a Target parking?
I may answer that, uh, Kritsch, if you go as planning manager. So a food truck would be allowed on non-residential property. But if a service, motorized service vendor or a motorized good goods vendor would not be allowed on non-residential property, if that clarifies it.
Okay, okay, cool. And uh stuff like farmer's market and so on is not covered in these?
That it would be under a separate uh permit and review.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hey, Vice Chair Wong.
So somewhere along the way, I thought there was a whole set of rules for ice cream trucks, like, I think it's like six, three, nine. Does this supersede the ice cream trucks in the CMC, or is this something different? I just, if if my my main point is, if you've got ice cream truck regulations, maybe we can streamline them too with these if you're gonna do them all at once. I don't know why ice cream trucks are, have special privileges. Maybe they got a PAC or lobbying group I don't know about. I'm just kidding. But but to be honest, I mean, like, uh we we have six point three nine. And in six point three nine, you'll see similar types of regulations. Maybe you wanna streamline them uh if you're gonna do all the mobile vendors. And then I I kinda wanna do the uh the uh Girl Scout cookie test. Uh Girl Scout cookie test goes like this. Um I'm setting up a Girl Scout cookie booth outside on a sidewalk. It's not mine. It's sitting on the con- it's sitting at Main Street. Can I set up a Girl Scout cookie, uh you know, booth in, if, you know, a Girl Scout cookies booth out there and get a permit to do that?
Well, Girl Scout-
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wong, um responding to your ice cream truck permits, and you cited section six point three nine, are referring to San Jose's code? We, I don't believe-
There was one. I I've been reading one of these.
Yeah, I think so. We do now. San Jose does have one, but we do not have one.
Okay, so because the San Jose trucks come through us all the time, right? So their ice cream trucks hit us on all the edges. So like about, I don't know, Kitty, I think you in in our, yeah, someone blares something. I don't know what it is, um at about like two P M, like on a Sunday. Truck comes like flying by at thirty-five miles an hour into our neighborhoods trying to sell ice cream. I've never seen anyone buy ice cream, but the thing flies through, so, so yeah. I've seen- This would include ice cream trucks.
Doesn't include ice cream trucks as a motorized uh vendor.
As a motorized vendor, okay.
Already, uh we cannot regulate um or totally ban that from happening uh because of the legal code. And we do have Sarah Lindsay here who can actually uh address that issue, she can put this in the attorney's office. But they're not allowed to stop for more than fifteen minutes to complete a transaction. And they do have to adhere to our code and register with our city in order to conduct business in good fashion.
Okay, uh so and and so the Girl Scout cookie test is is basically if I wanted to go, you know, go boost my daughter's Girl Scout cookie sales, I I don't have a daughter in Girl Scouts, so just just a clarification. But as an example, I wanna go boost my Girl Scout cookie slots. I can get a permit from the city uh and just set up shop somewhere on a street somewhere and and pretty much get going. Is that, is that okay?
Uh as long as they adhere to the requirements of the code, uh they are um, they they'll be able to do that.
Okay, I'll flip it the other way. Um trying to teach my kids how to, you know, be entrepreneurs and good capitalists, um get a set of lemonade stand. So instead of lemonade stand outside my house in a neighborhood residential street, would they be fined? No permit? My front yard.
I don't believe that there is an exemption for that, but we could certainly look into adding that as an exemption.
Um Vice Chair, do you have a five-foot sidewalk? And would this lemonade stand be blocking more than four feet of passable area?
Uh at my house, no, um but uh, you know, I just wanna double check that they don't need a permit as a kid.
That's gonna be a pretty small lemonade stand if it's gonna have four feet of passable uh area on a five-foot sidewalk. Um uh going back to your ice cream truck uh that you mentioned, so I can hear the sound that the song that they're playing inside with the windows shut. Uh so I believe I heard something about broadcasting sound uh in this, in this uh proposed ordinance, uh is that correct?
That is correct. They do, they would, they cannot use any um audible uh or amplified music in order to um attract attention.
Okay, um Commissioner Feng, you had your hand raised. Did you, did you have a question?
Uh yeah, I was, I was actually just gonna comment uh. Uh Commissioner Saxena mentioned something that I had highlighted in my notes as well. And this was the prohibition of non uh, I don't wanna say it, uh mobile, mobile services. So it's non-food trucks on uh non-residential sites. And I um I actually know a little of the history uh from way back in the ancient days uh when, when this was first proceeding through, so it's probably twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. And I know that one of the things that was cited was a mobile hair truck cut uh haircut truck that was coming to the Apple campus on the, you know, over on the uh, you know, what do you call it, Results Way campus. So this would prohibit that. I I actually think that seems uh awfully, awfully prohibitive. I mean, this is really a kind of a comment for later, but maybe I just wanted to put that out there uh for discussion um and consideration among the commissioners, um you know, prior to the, prior to the oral communication section here. You know, in general, I, in general, I'm pretty uh pretty much in agreement with these things. I think that um the time restrictions are a little bit tight, but uh not, not unusual. But I do think that in particular, that um that one element, which was the uh services not available on on site, that that's something that I would have a concern there, particularly because uh, you know, if we're trying to do things like reduce traffic. Uh on one hand, I understand the uh goal of trying to support local businesses. On the other hand, um this is just kind of the mode that some things are provided at these days. So um I would just throw that as something to consider as we deliberate on this later. Thanks.
Are there any other clarifying questions from the commissioners at this point?
I had one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Takam.
Yeah, um early on, in terms of, and and maybe I just missed an element of the definition between um the stationary and roaming. Um and then where they are uh allowed and prohibited. And I believe in residential areas, stationary was prohibited, but roaming was allowed. And I guess my question here is, is the definition between stationary and roaming um strong enough? In other words, if a stationary uh vendor can physically move his his uh business, is it really stationary or is it roaming since it's temporary in the first place? So so that just seemed unclear to me, why one would be prohibited and the other wouldn't. When it seems like they're kind of, and and again, maybe it's just I need re-clarification on the definition of the roaming and the stationary.
Does it have more than two wheels, or does it more?
Right. Yeah, could be. Wheelbarrow, yeah.
Well, I also question this with regards to safety because we're, I believe it's kids twelve and under are allowed to ride on the sidewalk with on their bicycles. And I wonder how you you can have a roaming, whether it's roaming or stationary on a five-foot sidewalk. I don't understand how we're going to meet ADA requirements. Um and you're also asking for the, for the four-foot clearance. And I, is that, is four feet now the the ADA um minimum, a passable area? I thought it was more like, you know, three, three and a half. Uh so a- anyway, I'm just wondering how a roaming cart could actually uh allow the four-foot clearance in uh most of the city, not just in residential areas, because we have kids riding on their bicycles. Um, you know, in commercial areas and on Stevens Creek Boulevard. If, could someone address that part?
Yeah, I could address that, Chair Moore. Uh so the requirement uh is four feet. Um ADA standard is thirty-six inches for clearance. We stated four feet just to ensure that there's additional clearance. So um that requirement is for all sidewalks. And so in cases where the sidewalk is not wide enough, that's a requirement that you need to meet. Therefore, you couldn't locate your facility in a sidewalk that's, let's say, currently five feet unless, like you said, you have a really skinny, you're just maybe standing there, you're not blocking anything.
That's a clarifying question. So if that's the case, can I just just put my little booth on the easement? You know, it's a public easement. Forget the sidewalk, I'll just set up an easement.
Correct, if it is, if that, uh the public uh, the, what is the landscape easement or the uh parkway?
Strip, yeah, the the, yeah, the parkway. All right, cool.
I'm sorry, they they can set up in the parkway strip?
Uh, as long as it is paved over, yes.
If it's paved over, okay, so not if it's if it's landscaped. Okay, so I have a bit of an issue with that. I mean, in some parts of the city, uh, the the sidewalk is right behind the curb. Um, so you could potentially have a vendor that's, you know, right. You know, really close to where the traffic is, um, and that seems to me as a bit of a safety issue. Um, you know, especially, you need car doors to open and close and and things like that. Um, so I would personally, I would prefer they were set back away from, uh, the curb face. Uh, so I, you know, I I tend to think of the traditional, you have the curb and then you have a maybe a four foot parkway strip and then a five foot sidewalk. Uh, behind that and and that. Well, there, I mean, there you have the issue that your their cart is too large. They can't actually put it there. They can't, you know, move it, uh. Down the sidewalk because they're going to be too wide. Um, so I'm wondering what where where in the city, I know we're allowing it in certain areas, but I'm wondering where that actually could happen. Um, and then the other part, going back to the bicycles, I'm I'm concerned about, um. Uh, them being able to move around these, uh, carts, so. Uh, I'm I'm not really sure where this is going to be applicable because you would need about a. I'm gonna say probably a seven foot wide sidewalk, uh, for this to, for this to happen. Am I understanding this correctly?
I'll take that. Hi, Chair Moore. Uh, so, yes, per S B nine forty six, we are not allowed to prohibit sidewalk bending. And we can only establish regulations to, um. Create safe environments for bicyclists, um, for pedestrians and for the vendors themselves as well. Um, so there are certain locations where if you have a sidewalk that is right next to the curb, what we call a monolithic sidewalk, which is a curb, your sidewalk. And then you have landscaping or a building or something like that. That's probably not a location you can do it because you wouldn't have the clearance for that four feet, which is one of the additional standards we talked about. Um, there are other places, um, you know, uh, that have that separation, for example, uh, by Whole Foods. There is, uh, a paved portion. Some of them have the tree planters and then there's some space and then there's a sidewalk. And then there's a landscaping for the rest of Whole Foods. So potentially in other locations, right? So across the board, we're supposed to allow sidewalk vend- vendors, um. But we have established certain regulations. So if you have concerns about the face of walk, even if you have, you know, for example, like the Whole Foods sidewalk. If you wanted additional setback, you know, like you can't be as close to a curb by a certain distance. Um, we can probably ask, uh, C O if they have any, um, save, we can kind of regulate that, um. I think Sarah Lucy is on.
Well, I know, just for for our political signs, I, we have to be eighteen inches back. Um. So I would want something similar to that. I I my assumption is that that was for car door swings, um, that that was, uh. Put into the code so that that would be a perhaps something we could do. I I have a question, if if you could reiterate where the food trucks are going to be allowed, um, across the city. And in the hours, I would like to hear that repeated also.
Yeah, I can answer that. So food trucks, um, as proposed would be allowed on, um. Private property on exclusively non-residential, um, properties. Um, public streets and, um, both residential and non-residential areas. And, um, those hours would be, uh. See, and maybe we can also pull up the the slide that shows those, um, hours and duration. I believe it's slide seventeen or eighteen. Um, so, non-residential, uh. Would be weekdays from seven to eleven, weekends from seven to eleven as well, and exclusively residential. Uh, weekdays from nine A M to eight P M and weekends from nine A M to six P M. And, um, again, the the duration for, um, for vending would be limited to the time required to complete that transaction. So, um, first row, um, and then up to fifteen minutes if you're located on a public street. And then if you're located on private property, three hours on, um, up to three hours on that particular property, uh, in any twenty four hour period.
Oh, okay, um, so Jeff, let's say thirty people, I I pull up a food truck in a residential neighborhood. And, uh, thirty people line up and is that fifteen minutes per individual? You know, in their transaction, um, you know, what if somebody shows up and they are ordering, uh, for fifty people?
Well, the, the way the code is written is is you're limited to that fifteen minutes, so, um. You know, if if that fifteen minutes lapses, then they technically by code would have to relocate.
And does relocate mean move their truck two feet?
We, um.
I'm just thinking of the guy with thirty people in line in a big order that's there, um. You know, does he just hit his truck a little bit ahead and?
Next call, sir.
Yeah, ideally it would be the next street.
Commissioner Moore, you you are correct. We can certainly, if there's concern about that, we can certainly put in some language about the distance. Also, remind, reminder to we, uh, according enforcement, of course, is 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 complaint based. Uh, but do we do have some code enforcement, uh, opportunities here as well?
Okay, and code enforcement is usually available on the weekend?
Uh, no, not on the weekends, but we do utilize the sheriff's office.
Okay, so this this is not part of the, this is not part of the, um, sidewalk vendor. You, uh, law essentially that that we're having to comply with. This is, this is something, uh, something completely different.
Um, if I may add to that, uh, question, um, I believe there's the vehicle motor code that prohibits the city from banning, um. Uh, mobile vending in the public right of way outright. And so as a result, we have to allow it within the public right of way. But we can have certain health safety standards and, um. Uh, you know, standards around allowing, uh, persons to only stop for a limited amount of time.
So, may I make a comment? Um. I mean, we could come up with a million different combinations and situations and try to regulate every last element of that in this ordinance. But, I mean, it comes down to something that is deemed, um, an issue. And, um, you know, trying to stay broad and and general to me seems like in this particular case, given. It's not a widespread element in the city, um. That's just my two cents. Otherwise, we can talk about.
Vice Chair Wong.
Can can, no, can I add to what Commissioner Takahashi is trying to do? So, so what what is the policy objective that we're trying to reach here? Because I think that's really the heart of the question. Um, if we're trying to encourage economic development and and we want our restaurants and the, you know, the. Not the big players in the Chamber of Commerce, like the real small businesses in the Chamber of Commerce, right? Like the real businesses here, residents and people that live here to make a living, and we're trying to encourage their ability to actually have a food truck. It's a very different set of policies. If you're trying to disencourage like our, our, I don't know, the crazy ice cream driver who's in my neighborhood that just. Come flies by on a Sunday and we've never bought ice cream from him and no idea where the guy comes from. Um, you know, then that's a different kind of thing. I I don't know what the policy objective is here, like, why why are we doing this? Other than the state mandated something, we want to protect ourselves, and that's a different kind of objective. So can someone clarify what we're trying to do here? And and why?
I think, I think Vice Chair, uh, Wong, you have it right. I have Angela support me on this one as well. You're you're correct that. First foremost, our our goal is to comply with S B nine four six. And then secondly, we kind of looked at our, our, uh, our neighbors in the region and see what, want to be as consistent as possible. And be more consistent regionally. So that's sort of where we came up with. We have a consultant on board that worked with many of these different cities and just want to be consistent to everyone else. That has been, uh, set set up regulations so that we're 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 consistent while we're still obviously encouraging, uh, retail.
Let me ask you a different question, a different policy question. Why do we have to be consistent with every other city? That's question number one, but we don't have to answer it right now. But question two, let's say economic development. I I don't know you very well, Angela, so nice to meet you. Um, but let's say economic development was like, oh, my God, our restaurants are in a very bad position. Let's go encourage them to actually start, you know, be able to do mobile delivery or mobile setup. Maybe Cupertino wants to be the restaurant truck capital of the world. Fine. You know, at least in this region, you can park your truck here and we'll do it like every week. You know, we'll do it every day, rotate in, rotate out. We're gonna create spaces for you to go do that and we'll generate the tax revenue here. Let's go for it, right? I I I'm just trying to figure out where we try to head in that direction or we're just. Just trying to conform to what every other city is trying to do and and that's, I think you kind of answered my question, but I didn't hear it from Angela's side.
Well, let me, uh, before I let Angela go, uh, so to answer the first question is. Uh, we want to be consistent because it's it's kind of hard to sort of regulate your borders on moving vehicles, right? So we want to be as consistent as possible, uh, to kind of encourage, one, encourage these businesses and also create regulations are. Um, that don't necessarily change just just because you cross the street to a different city. And, um, and, uh, creating, allowing sort of mobile, uh, vehicles everywhere without much regulation has its own set of, uh, challenges as well. Uh, and that's sort of the the goal that we're looking at here. So Angela, go ahead if you want to answer the second part of that question.
Yes, correct. Thank you. Um, and it's an excellent question, uh, Vice Chair. Uh, so for economic development, it's really, you know, we we do want to see, um, you know, a thriving community and be able to accommodate. Kind of, um, rising trends and we do see motorized vendors as a rising trend, um. And, uh. But looking at our existing code, we actually did not have any regulations for motorized vendors. So if you look back, um, the the vendors or the regulations we had were literally for the push carts or for the the person who was. Walking around holding their their goods, um, and so there was actually no way to regulate. Um, and we felt it was, um, important to be able to regulate these types of services and, uh, vendors. Um, because, uh, you know, it's just good for the community to be able to have, to understand what the process is. And as Director Fu had mentioned, um. You know, we don't necessarily have to be the exact same with our neighbors, uh, but it's good to have an understanding and be similar. Because these vendors are kind of working the entire region. Uh, and then we we get the questions very often where they're calling and saying, well, Sunnyvale does this, so I'm confused what is required in Cupertino. Uh, and again, we're just trying to make this, um, as efficient as possible, you know, from our end to be able to regulate and to make sure people are complying. And that these businesses are thriving and able to service our community in a very safe way.
So question is, would the fee for me to be in Cupertino be more expensive than the fee to be in Sunnyvale, for example? Like, what's the fee, like, to to actually apply for a business license? Just kind of curious on the barrier.
Oh, the business license itself, um, you know, on our our fee schedule, I believe this year might be a hundred and fifty four dollars. I'll have to double check. But we are pro- um, proposing a registration fee for mobile vendors, uh, on an annual basis. And I think, um, Jeff may have touched upon it, but that fee then has to be decided by council and incorporated into the city's fee schedule.
Um, there's a question from, uh, Commissioner Saxina and, uh, also could we have attachment three, uh, pulled up? So that we can see the existing policies in the neighboring cities, so we're all on the same page with that.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Saxina?
Okay, I have a question. Uh, what happens to sales tax? Okay, like, uh, when we issued this permits, do we, do they have to pay sales tax to the city? Uh, based on what they sell or like, how is it even collected?
Um, Angela, are you going to take that question?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I was trying to figure out this. Attachment three. I apologize, um.
Well, that's okay.
Commissioner, your question was about sales tax?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, as part of their business license, um, we do require, um, that they. Give us, um, you know, their total receipts and then that that they pay. So, um, it it really is somewhat of a, we we do rely on the businesses and the vendors, uh, especially to. Submit, you know, their receipts and their portion of of payment.
And, uh, for a move, um, um, a vendor who's moving, uh. Do they know whether they're in West San Jose or Cupertino or Sunnyvale, like Los Altos, like, how does that work? Like, are they supposed to record that or it it doesn't really matter?
Oh, they are supposed to record their sales per, um, city limits. So the assumption is when they move, if they're doing multiple locations in one day, uh, when they move to the, uh, next city. They, you know, start somehow tracking, uh, their receipts or maybe it's by time. And then later and then they, they're supposed to reconcile that and let us and submit their receipts for the time that. And the sales that they made in Cupertino or within the city limits of any particular city.
Interesting. Because, uh, I mean, I'm just wondering if I am pushing a cart compliance with that thing might be really hard. Uh, but I guess it is what it is, so I'm not going to talk about.
Let's just wait till many weeks.
Did did we have outreach to our our local service businesses and restaurants? Where we have, uh, some polling data, what they thought about this, um. For, because it's going to be competition for what they're doing and we're in the middle of a pandemic and I was just wondering what what their thoughts were on this.
So, uh, we did not do polling. It it's, um, a little difficult for us to be able to send out via email. Um, because not every business that registers actually provides an email address to us. Um, so it was our our outreach, myself reaching out to businesses, working with the chamber, um. And trying to solicit as much feedback as possible. And then actually just, uh, receiving comments over the years from businesses, um. You know, a few of you may recall when, um, some of the discussion began quite a few years, about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. When there was a surge of these, uh, food trucks or service vendors, uh, we we were getting feedback from businesses. Uh, and again, this is one of the things that we were trying to keep in mind as we created the framework, uh, was the, um. Establishing, you know, trying to limit the competition between these mobile vendors, um, and brick and mortar establishments.
Okay, so are there a lot of restaurant owners who are members of the the chamber?
There are quite a few, um, and then I did reach out individually to businesses, um. And again, depending on, you know, the the way we're structuring this ordinance is, um. If the trucks can be on, um, public right of way, they really are kind of restricted of where they can park. Um, and that's kind of a natural buffer or barrier between, um, these vehicles of public right of way. And, um, established brick and mortar businesses.
Great, um, thank you, Angela, and I was wondering if you could briefly go over attachment three so we could. Um, have a quick rundown of what our neighboring cities are doing. And this is, uh, with regards to, um. This would be our food trucks and our service trucks, correct?
Correct.
And good.
Jeff or Ellen, would you like to go over this or I can? Okay, I will go ahead and, so, uh, again, it was a sampling of cities that actually have, um, you know, our neighboring cities. You'll see there are quite a few, um, for example, Campbell, Los Gatos, uh, that just allow these to happen. Or, you know, they they don't have any processes in place, um. For Los Gatos, food trucks are only allowed on, um, for special events. Uh, and then you'll see it just, there's a myriad of of different policies in place where fees are collected, um. You know, from cities such as Menlo Park and Mountain View, um, San Jose, San Mateo. And, um. You know, then there's different ways that they calculate how they do these, um. But as you can see, uh, again, some require, like, the police department permit, uh, for San Jose. In addition to a city license, there's, uh, additional registration or a vending license. And the Mountain Views, um, kind of gave a breakdown of how they calculated with the number of employees on the application. And the Menlo Park also had a peddler's permit, um, that had to go through the police department.
Chair Moore, may I ask a question?
Of course, Vice Chair Wong.
So I'm I'm going to go back to my first question. What what is the business objective that we're trying to accomplish here? Because it still doesn't seem very clear, other than, I mean, I'm I'm looking at all these other cities that don't have common rules either. It's like we're going first. It's like we're going first and they're just all going to follow us. I mean, if that's the objective, that's fine. We can state that and say, look, we're going to put in a system that hopefully all the other cities adopt and take ours and use it as a model. Okay with that. I'm just trying to figure out like why 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 we're doing this. And I'm I'm kind of leaning towards Commissioner Takahashi's point of view. We don't have a problem and we just spent a lot of staff time doing this, so.
Sure, I I think I've stated, I think I've stated our reasons for for doing this. But obviously, it's up to the commission how you want to make your recommendations to the council. You can take out certain parts, you can just stick with SP nine four six requirements. It's entirely up to you for for your discussion discretion. We propose what we propose based on our evaluation, our discussion with consultants, but it's entirely up to you.
No, and and the other question that's related to that is, right, I mean, if if we look at the restaurant industry in the whole, the the competition for brick and mortar dining is they're getting decimated by delivery and food app companies. Right? So food app companies, food trucks, any kind of motorized vending, I mean, they're they're all decimating it. And the fact that a lot of people are actually, actually the next wave of food technology and the next wave of food competition is coming from ghost kitchens and food delivery. And if you don't know what a ghost kitchen is, it's like one, one big super facility that pretends to be thirty seven different types of restaurants tied with the food app company that just goes out and just delivers stuff into people's neighborhoods. And so this is why I found Chair Moore's question very important, right? Like, what what do our restaurants want in our city, right? Our taxpayer and restaurants, small businesses, like what what do they wish that we would do? I mean, are they trying to get into the business and and would love to have their own food truck? And this would make it easier for them to be successful? Do we have specific complaints from residents that there's too many food trucks at the moment and and we need to limit this? Or maybe we don't have enough food trucks, right? Let's let's go be food truck capital. Let's go put a food truck park up and allow people to eat outside and not have to worry about COVID or pandemics. And just like the way we're doing things with sidewalks. So that that's why I'm saying it just doesn't seem, I understand what you guys are saying. I'm saying we could do more if if it made sense in in any one of those directions. I have no preference in any of them. I'm just trying to figure out, like, I mean, I'm I'm just trying to rationalize why we're doing what we're doing right now. Because it it's doesn't seem to have an objective other than conformity.
If I may answer a portion of that. So the sidewalk vendors, we have to do in terms of actually having some rules about that. So this is, I'm assuming Chair Wang, your question is really about the motorized vendors. With regard to motorized vendors, I mean, they can only be there at the invitation of the property owners. It's not as though a food truck can just show up on private property and say, I'm setting up here for the evening. They have to be there at the invitation of the property owner. And I'm assuming that the property owner doesn't want to necessarily antagonize their own tenants there. So and there are other regulations that have been put into place, such as saying you cannot be there if you're displacing the minimum amount of parking that's required for the businesses on your property. So there are a number of regulations and restrictions on that food truck actually appearing on a site. So we're just trying to address and and put some regulations around the desire for businesses or property owners to have such businesses. And so we just want to make sure that we have a framework within which they can.
Okay, I I guess what I'm just asking for, maybe I'm asking for a higher purpose or higher mission here. Like maybe Angela, and I'm not putting words in your mouth here, I'm just using as example here. Maybe Angela, you have a vision of like, you know, every gas station now be able to put a food truck and pop drop something in on a corner so that people can actually, you know, get get to more food or get to more choices in food and that would drive our tax revenue, which would help us in our budget, right? And then I'd be like, oh yeah, this is great. Let's go do it, right? So that that I'm just trying to figure that part out. So just so you know what I'm coming from.
Sure, may I go ahead and respond to Vice Chair? Oh, yeah, it's it's excellent to kind of think of, well, what is the largest goal? And really, it's quite a mixed bag, right? Or not a mixed bag, but the feedback that we have been getting, it it there's a range. And so one of the most important things is there was a concern or a desire to have some type of regulation in place. Because we were having these one off or these situations where, for example, there was a pizza truck that parked in a residential area and they were more of like a actual, like a kitchen where they were baking pizzas, they were having drivers drive up and then the drivers would take the pizzas and then deliver them. So obviously, there was complaints because this large vehicle, this kitchen on wheels parked in the neighborhood and was kind of set up shop as kind of almost like a brick and mortar. And they had delivery runners. And so there was a concern. Well, in in fact, our regulations, our current regulatory, existing regulations didn't have anything that spoke to mobile vendors, correct? And then also, you know, there's definitely other interests from restaurants who may want to go into the food truck business in addition to having their brick and mortar. But then also, I think there were concerns quite a, maybe a couple of years ago where it was a food truck parked on Stevens Creek Boulevard and it was while Main Street was under construction. So it was parked in front of of the Metropolitan, I think the apartments there and because there's a little curb cutout. And again, there was complaints and concerns of, because students, in fact, at that time, were were lining up and just wandering around. And and so there, we did not have any type of regulations in place. And I think this was rising to the concern of council of their desire to have some type of regulations put in place. And I think that was one large goal that we were trying to achieve.
So just to repeat it so the public understands, there's there's a desire to have a regulatory framework because none exists and there's a loophole that could be exploited. That's one, right? Two, there's potential reasons for existing businesses to want a regulatory framework so they could operate within that framework so that they could potentially generate more tax revenue. That's your two. And three, their safety concerns in terms of what type of mobile vendors are showing up might be a concern for kids or other individuals that might be, you know, less fortunate in terms of making a decision. Like, I can get behind something like that if it was put out, that's what I'm trying to say. I just didn't see it that way. So thank you for the background.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm I'm concerned that you could have a business that perhaps it already has its own cafeteria, but they want to have a variety of food choices for for lunch, for instance. And the way this is written, they could have ten food trucks. Well, as long as they're not taking up too many parking spaces, they could have ten different food trucks show up every day of the week to provide, you know, some different cuisine. And there's, there's nothing that that could prevent that as as long as they're, you know, again, not taking up too many parking spaces. And then that business, their employees aren't coming to any Cupertino restaurants. And also those businesses that if the the food trucks which have shown up, there's not really a way to determine if they're really honestly saying that they were in Cupertino and they're, you're paying their tax to Cupertino. So I, they're, they, you're, they're on the honor system if if they're actually going to be paying tax to to our city. So is that, is that scenario about right that you could have a business doing that? As long as they're on private property?
That's correct.
I could, I could kind of speak on some of that. So again, in terms of the number of of food trucks that can be operating on private property on any given time would be maxed out at three. Any more than that, we'd be looking at them applying for a special event permit, the private property. The property managers applying for a special event permit for like a a one off event for any more than that. So, yeah, up to three as an accessory use, limited to to three hours within a twenty four hour period.
Okay, so there was a business that was doing basically food, food truck Fridays. And they would have three, three food trucks show up. So the way this is written, they could do that every day of the week now. Is that correct?
At the permission of the property owner, yes.
Right, okay. So they would have their cafeteria and the three food trucks. The reason why they would like it is because their employees are, they're close by, they're not, you know, going far away. The reason why the city restaurants wouldn't, owners wouldn't be happy about it is because now they they set up shop in Cupertino, they're paying a higher lease amount and they're not happy because the business that they were counting on is is going to the food trucks. Is that about right?
Chair Moore, that is a scenario, yeah, I mean, you know, many things are taken into account. But that could be one way, yes, one scenario.
So can we all go back to the seat conditional use permit that we granted? Whole Foods to have food trucks on Tuesday evenings during the summer months. And it went through planning commission and the the thought at the time was that this was a positive, uh, community based event. But it just didn't gain traction from the standpoint of, you know, there were six plus trucks there offering a wide variety of of fare, but interest waned. And so I'm, again, getting, well, I mean, debating every single scenario is something that I think if we see a problem in the future, we can address it and amend what we have to address that. But working to address every single scenario in a single meeting, I think, is an unrealistic and and not a productive use of of city staff's time.
May I ask a question to clarify from where Commissioner Takahashi is coming from? What is the volume of trucks? Like, how many people apply for this right now? Or how many mobile vending, like, trucks come through the city? Is this like that other issue we had before where someone was complaining about something, it was like only six incidents? Like in like seven years?
Yeah.
I don't know what it was, we dismissed it pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember what it was either.
We have to put this in perspective of the pandemic and and what actually would be allowed at this time. Are there, are there any rules that we've got that that are in place for public health and safety?
I I think that's not my concern. My concern is there had to be a reason why we're studying this, but if the volumes were so low, I can't believe we spent money on a consultant and I can't believe we put this much staff time. So if it's like ten trucks, like coming through the city, like, you know, per month, I'm like, why the heck are we wasting time on this, right? Back to Commissioner Takahashi's point, if if that's what he's saying, I don't want to put words in his mouth. But but that's what I'm saying, like, if that's what it is, like, this is ridiculous. Like, why are we wasting consulting time, legal time, all this stuff on this, right? But if there's a bigger purpose, like, hey, you know, we can drive ten percent more revenue in retail sales if we do this and we can actually help with businesses that are in post pandemic crisis, then I'm like, cool, let's go do it. Let's go find a way to make them succeed, right? But that this is, this is the heart of what I'm trying to get at. I I just don't know why we spent all this time on it. So that's all.
That that wasn't exactly my point, but I I can definitely understand where you're coming from. My point was, we're coming up with all these different infinite number of scenarios. And we're going to discuss each one and come up with a, an element in this ordinance that addresses the minutia when I don't think we need that, given the volume and that it's not currently an issue. That's all I'm getting at.
You suggest we should just address this, this.
Well, well, I mean, the whole purpose of this, of this, yeah, yeah, it was, it was relative to compliance and and developing policies that made sense and that were broad enough where I think the city can utilize it to interpret and and not, I mean, the the whole point is public safety, is it a menace? Is it hurting our local businesses, right? So structure just around that and and leave it broad. And if an issue, if there's a loophole that comes up in the future, say, somebody's constantly inviting a lot of trucks, then we can address that in the future, assuming it is pointed out as a nuisance and that people have an issue with it, right? So I guess I just grow impatient at trying to think about, what if this happens? What if this happens? I mean, to a great extent, if it's something that is is like, oh yeah, that that I can see being a big problem, then yeah, we should discuss it, but, you know, just let's be, let's be practical. I'm just trying to, trying to encourage us to be somewhat practical about this, that's all.
We do have an obligation to protect our small businesses and Commissioner Saxena has had his hand raised.
I, I wanted to step back a bit and understand what really is changing from the past, okay? So where we were earlier on and what will happen after this? So is there a way to look at it from that perspective? I know we're trying to become compliant with the state law, but like what, what was there earlier and how will it change now? Like, and let's just stick to food trucks and let's forget about the the push carts. Let's just stick to the movable big trucks which can come and sell.
Commissioner Saxena, you're trying to find the difference for the mobile, the mobile food trucks and service.
Uh, yeah, I mean, just to keep things simple, simple, because there's, there's so many things there. Like for the food trucks or somebody selling something out of a, a big way, a big vehicle, not the small handcart, a non-motorized one, but for the motorized one, what would change once we adopt the proposed, uh, the proposed plan versus what we have right now?
Great, great.
Yeah, I can, I can speak on that. So as it is right now, food trucks, if they would want to locate on a, say, like a shopping center or any other commercial or office property, they would need to go through a use permit process through planning commission. And that use permit would be associated with that location only. So, you know, operation standards would be pretty much limited to to that site. They wouldn't be able to roam or go from one place to another at the permission of multiple property owners without getting use permits for all those, all those sites. So this regu, this, yeah, the proposed standards here, you know, subject to all the regulations and registration, you know, at the permission of the property owner would let them do that.
And what about public spaces, like the side of a road?
So there is a section in the solicitors' chapter that does allow them to vend to construction sites and industrial properties. But other than that, it's, our code is pretty silent on that.
Okay, so you can't just go and park a food truck on Stevens Creek and start selling?
Our code doesn't have language for that, right?
So does that prohibit it or it, it there's no regulation at all and you can do it?
Well, you know, and I think maybe Sarah might be able to correct me if I'm wrong. But the vehicle code doesn't allow cities to restrict vending on on public streets if they are completely stopped and they are legally parked.
Okay, okay. So right now also they could do it and in the future also they can do it. Is that?
On on public streets.
Yeah, okay, so as long as it's not a no parking street and there is no bike lane or anything like that, they can just pull over on the side and.
Correct. And there's, yeah, and part of the regulation proposing is limiting them to fifteen. So I don't, there's anything right now that has a time limit.
Okay, okay.
Can I just add, can I add one, one thing to what you just said? Jeff, and I thi- I think I understood you said that the vehicle code doesn't allow the city to restrict, is that what you said, vending on on the public streets?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think the vehicle code doesn't allow the city to ban it entirely in certain areas. I think there's, there's room to restrict it. Similar to the way that we're restricting sidewalk vendors in terms of public, public safety and health issues. You know, that's a separate question from what the code says right now, but the vehicle code does allow you to to regulate it. It just not ban it entirely.
Commissioner Fung?
I actually had a suggestion for the commissioners.
Yes.
I feel like we could make a more informed judgment if we have a sort of a before and after comparison. Because that's when we'll actually understand the consequences of what we are passing. I think we, at least I don't have the detailed background knowledge of of what is permissible here and what is going to be permissible in the future after we pass this. And I would suggest that we consider the staff to come back to that, with that kind of a before, after scenario so that we have a good sense of what we're doing. And when you do that, also say that what is the minimum required by the, by the new state law and what extra we are putting to, you know, a better regulator, control it and so on. That would be my suggestion. I don't know what the other commissioners feel about it.
Okay, so we're we're kind of moving ahead with that. Commissioner Fung, do you have some comments?
Yeah, I do. I feel like we kind of popped into deliberation. You wandered in there. So, you know, we still have, we still have their public comment, this, that's still a thing. But I'll go ahead and touch on a couple of things to the staff and city attorney's office. Please correct me if I'm wrong, the health regulations related for a food truck under, you know, under COVID, for instance, those are part of the county regulation for food trucks. So they would have to be compliant, just like. So they would have to be compliant, just like, uh, I think every other restaurant restaurant. Um, the particular cases, we we're kind of talking. And then I think it's 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 good that we pointed out the fact that some of these cases are. You know, these theoretical theoretical examples that may or may not really be real. Um, there are real cases that are similar to these. Um, the case of too many food trucks was one that was faced by Gilroy a while back where. Um, people who had stationary restaurants were complaining that there were a lot of food trucks. Um, parked in downtown streets and that was causing a um. Uh, causing a loss of business. I think that uh, you know, this is something that the Chamber of Commerce here has had a discussion as well. Um, the other example, the example of a private uh, a private company wants to have a lot of food trucks. And that's actually Google in Mountain View when they were operating. Um, Google did that intentionally. They had, if you go there, there would be many, many trucks. Uh, part of the reason for that is it they have a very tight traffic restriction going in and out of North Bay Shore. And this is one way to reduce uh vehicle traffic. Now, there were complaints from people in downtown Mountain View that felt that their in their business was being impact impacted by uh. By having free trucks and mobile services there, but they're also, you know, Google also operates a extensive free, uh, you know, free cafeteria. So, you know, it was just going to be, there was really a goal here, which was, you know, from the business point person's standpoint, they were trying to keep people. From spending a lot of time commuting in and out and as well as trying to reduce the trip count, you know, the time that you spend leaving the site and coming back. Um, I I find in some respects, I find the discussion here a little a little um, it's a little ironic. Uh, you know. There's clearly a need, I think, to uh make adjustments to the city ordinances to comply with state law with um. I wrote it down here, uh, you know, with to to comply with state law. Uh, what I think the problem here is that we're kind of overzealously trying to restrict. What can be done in the city to absolutely no more than what the law allows. And that's the ironic part, I think, because. Uh, you know, a number, there are, this is something that I would believe I would say is a hallmark of this council, the current council. But they want to allow nothing more than uh than the very minimum beyond what the state. Uh, is is uh is permitting. Uh, and that's done often without a real eye toward what is the objective. I I think. Uh, Commissioner Wong brought a very good point, you know, what exactly is the point here? Uh, I think that in the earlier times, if I turn the clock back, I believe five years. When I was participating, I I went to a number of the Economic Development Committee meetings. Uh, where this was being discussed while it while it was being researched at the time, you know, I think there was a different objective here. Part of that is by establishing a. By establishing a standard, a clear standard, that makes it easier for businesses to make a decision, do I want to be here or not? Now it's, now you can see that some of these things have kind of turned into when you add a restriction that says. You can be a vendor, you can uh come here and provide a service, but you can't stay parked more than fifteen minutes. I think that we probably missed the uh original objective here, which was to make it clear and to make it dual. But what we're doing here is doing things where you say a commercial, uh, a commercial business, a private commercial business. Is not allowed to invite um service service providers onto their site. Just seems like. It's just over restriction for no apparent, for no apparent reason other than to say, you know, well, the state didn't didn't allow this. Already, so we're going to not allow it. And I think that's just unfortunate. Thank you.
All right, um, so so Angela, one concern that that I have that I'm I'm not feeling is was adequately addressed was. Whether or not we are protecting the small businesses in Cupertino and that in that we have enough feedback on that. I was wondering if you had some comment about that. And also, I recall that uh prior to the pandemic, uh, ninety-five percent of our new retail. Business, um, it was restaurants and what kind of impact you foresee that we're going to have on our on our local restaurants. Do you have some information about that?
Sure, excellent questions. Um, the chairman, or uh in regards to the outreach, um. You know, outreach over the years um has happened uh to the businesses. Uh, and again, through these regulations and kind of the time constraints or the limitations, we are hoping that. That would protect uh the businesses. And again, uh dictating um or. Having allowances where these mobile uh food trucks or vendors would be able to locate again was. Um, that attempt to be able to protect our brick and mortars, um, because there were going. There are restrictions as to where, you know, time, place and manner, um, that we were going to allow the mobile vendors or the motorized vendors. And then um your question is to kind of um the impact or kind of what may happen. Um, moving forward with COVID and uh the impact on restaurants. Uh, again, it's it's challenging times um for everyone and. There may, in fact, there may be many brick and mortar restaurants that decide to close or um and then. You know, transition to possibly uh mobile vending. So of it it's really difficult to say right now. Um, obviously, our restaurants, um, for the most part, they. They were the ones who were able to reopen or actually operate during the shelter in place as to go. Um, and then slowly through the tiers, you know, the outdoor dining a couple of months ago or a month ago and then. Now, uh, a portion of the twenty-five percent indoor dining is now allowed. Um, and and again, it's, it's been tough on everyone, uh, the restaurants. Um, you know, have been hard hit as well, but uh right now it's it's difficult to kind of. See what possibly will happen. Um, and and again, one of the interests of having this. Ordinance was to have something in place because again, uh, the current MUNI code did not address motorized uh vendors. It really just spoke to um kind of the stationary and the the single person kind of just walking around.
Great, thank you. I'm not seeing any further questions from the commission, so we're going to open this up for. Public comment. And at the moment, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Did we um? Uh, there we go. Okay, great. Um, Lisa Warren. To unmute.
Hi.
Hi, Lisa.
So I've been in and I have three meetings going on at the same time, so I've been in and out of this and I don't know if there's been any discussion. On whether it's okay, possible, whatever, whether it reconsidered. To regulate or have rules of some kind. About the packaging mobile vendors have. Um, plastic, just in COVID alone, you you know, in the in the beginning, you ordered something and picked it up. Or had it delivered, which I never do. Um. And you always got packets of utensils, plastic foam, plastic, which you don't need. You're taking it home to eat. You can't go anywhere else. So everywhere I went, I said, please ask people if they want them. Or if you can comment, you have to remember to tell them no. Now Lazy Dog, for example, asks the question in the beginning when you're ordering, so it's awesome. Tell them how many you want. If you don't want any, they don't give you any. But it's such a waste and such a plastic. World that all the mobile vendors that I am aware of. And it would be nice if you could regulate that and make it more environmentally friendly and not just go. With the status quo that is many places. And I too um. Have concerns, to me, mobile. I don't know, the whole food truck thing to me should be. An exception rather than the norm and to have trucks showing up, rolling in every day to the same places. Would not make me a happy resident, nor a happy business owner, whether I was a restaurant or not. Because it it it's just not something I think is appropriate is the best term I can think of. So I think limiting it as much as you can without, I don't know, I just. I do worry about the, not just the small businesses and not just the restaurant businesses, but kind of everyone. So I, that may or may not have made sense, but I really, really wish. That there was a way, and maybe there is, and maybe it was talked about and I just didn't hear it. Um, to deal with the garbage. Other than saying they have to bring their own thing to put it in and take it away. That's not really good enough. You gotta tell them what they can use if you're allowed to. That's it.
Uh, all right. Thank you, Lisa. And next we have Rose Grimes. Rose, are you there?
I am.
Okay, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thanks. I won't need all three minutes. Uh, listening to the discussion, I I'm really um impressed by the sensitivity to the existing businesses. And that's what I was thinking as well. I wonder if there is a way either as a pilot program. To enable existing Cupertino businesses to um get permits for auxiliary. Um, establishments of food trucks uh or for existing vendors to have perhaps permission to have a mobile satellite business. That will enable them to take advantage of the mobile architecture. While continuing to serve the Cupertino community and obviously pay sales taxes in in Cupertino and. Uh, again, emphasize emphasize it, pilot it, or somehow provide uh preferential access. To these kinds of um opportunities for existing Cupertino businesses. I yield back my time.
Great. Thank you, Rose. And next we have Jennifer. Jennifer, are you there?
Uh, yes, thank you, Kitty. Um, I just had a question about, um. We have, I've in other cities I have seen where you'd have like a food truck that. Would have pulled into a gas station and several times this, you know, the. There will be a truck there at various times in the parking lot of the gas station. Um, and then we have an issue, I know on El Camino in uh. Oh, Sunnyvale, um, there are trucks that will pull. Either onto El Camino and they will, and that's great. I have no problem with food trucks, really, really. You know, mom and pop, whatever, but you have sort of an inconsistency in that. A truck will come to a location on an ongoing basis at various times and they'll be parked like on the side of El Camino. And then traffic will park in the adjacent parking lots and come down and walk along the street, et cetera, purchase food. Then you have situations where somebody will park in the parking lot, people will park perhaps a long El Camino. Get out, go into the parking lot and purchase. So there's like no consistency. How how is that handled in terms of if a property owner wishes to have a vending truck? Come on to their property, do they have to issue, do they have to tell the city that they're allowing? Um, vendor X, Y, and Z to come on to their site at various times? And this is, who will be coming and if they, do they have a permit? Or or is this handled by the the private property owner and the vending truck itself? Does the city have any reason to have jurisdiction over where people are parking trucks? I also see this with dog grooming, no problem with dog grooming vans, but. It it's their mobile vans and are they parking on the side of like the El Camino? Are they parking on the side of Stevens Creek Boulevard, et cetera? If you call it, if you all could address that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, I see no further hands raised. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments come in during this item?
No, we've received no comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so um would any member of staff like to address some of the the questions we have? Jennifer had some questions about the permitting and how that process works. Do we have some comments on that? And uh, then we can go to the other um issues regarding plastic alternatives. And uh the feasibility of doing a pilot program.
Jeff, do you want to address the registration process?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Ben. Um, so i- in terms of. Whether the the those mobile uh food trucks would need to. Um, let the city know every location uh that they're going to be locating at. Um, at this time, no. Um, uh, the information that we would need from them uh would really just be. Um, uh, and I'm kind of just looking through uh what our ordinance says right now, just in plans that indicate the size of. Uh, the vending facility, so information um to that effect, including photographs, a copy of the. Uh, Tax and Fee Administration seller's permit. Um, you know, um, all approved um county public health um permits. Um, and uh, of course, a business license uh with the city. Um, and uh, you know, those are, those are essentially. Uh, the information, uh, a description of the proposed business would also um uh be requested. And that would include but not be limited to, um, you know, what type of food is being served or or goods or services. Um, as well as the hours of operation and days of the week. And then, um, if they are. Um, going around um on public streets, uh, where, what are their their general routes um throughout the city? So, um. Yeah.
A a quick question, Jeff. So uh, would code enforcement, um, if they went to one of these uh mobile vendors. Um, they would be able to get a copy of their uh business license? They're going to have some documentation that this. From the city that they've, you know, followed the procedure to be there?
They should have a copy of the registration uh and their business license handy with them at all times if they need to show it. Yeah.
Okay, great. And uh, what about the the feasibility of having um a pilot program that was suggested? Um, some sort of preferential access? Is that something that could be done?
Angela, do you want to help us out on that one?
Yes, I mean, that is something that we can definitely consider, um, yourselves or council can consider. Uh, again, you know, there is always uh the hope that our local businesses, the ones who currently have a location. Can expand their their businesses um and their business plans to include, you know, additional, um, you know. Mobile vending or services, but um, y- yes, we could look into a pilot program. Um, again, we would need to have. Kind of some regulations and standards in place in order to um roll that out um in terms of the this registration process.
Okay, great. And then what about the the plastic alternatives and adding uh something about that? You know, because we have a lot of, we have a lot of packaging waste. Um, is that something that's that staff has looked into? That whether or not having compostable materials is is that actually better for the environment in the long term? Have you?
Yeah, yeah, Chairman, I can answer. Uh, so I, we did discuss with the Sustainability Division about. Uh, including language, um, possibly in this ordinance and um, they had indicated, yeah, um, I think. Uh, styrofoam, um, we want to make sure that that is addressed and and any type of styrofoam. And glass would be prohibited under this ordinance, uh, or at least referred to um uh as being prohibited. And um, single use plastics specifically, they've indicated that that is a. Uh, possible council work item uh in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, so um, they're going to. Look into addressing it at that time, but um, as of right now, it's really just glass and styrofoam.
Okay, so, right, and we do not need to clarify any of the questions from. The public, so the public comment period is closed and we are beginning our deliberations. And do any of the planning commissioners have comments? Or would somebody like to make a motion and we'll deliberate on that?
Can we first check if there were any written comments received? Uh, or anything by the clerk?
I believe I asked that, but um, Madam Clerk, do we have any?
No, nothing's, nothing's come in on this item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Seth. And do we have any? Comments from the commissioners? Does someone want to make a motion? I I can say that I'm certainly inclined to go with the the SB, uh, I believe it's SB nine four six. Uh, rules, I'm uh, I'm having some trouble with um whether or not we have adequate information. Uh, and I would like Commissioner Saxena to um go over the extra information that he was interested in having again. If you could repeat that.
Yes, I feel I don't have enough information to vote on this. Okay. If we do go for a vote on the thing, I have to abstain because I just don't know what's going on here. What I would really need is something that says, hey, and if we have that, hopefully that will help us make a more informed judgment about what's the legal requirement. And as Commissioner Fang said, what more can we do to help the different stakeholders, including the restaurants or the, the people who want to run the trucks there? And the way it is right now, I just don't feel that I have enough information to make an informed judgment on this.
Saxena, your video cut out right when you're about to tell us what is that you're looking for. So can you repeat that for us?
Okay, all right. Thank you. So what I'm looking for, something that says, hey, this is where we are right now, the current state of affairs. This is what we need to be. This is what we're.
Okay, it's cut out again, Commissioner Saxena. I believe what you're saying is that you would, you want to know what are, what the current ordinance has for the three different types of trucks and what the new ordinance would change.
The state requirements and how much of it, and how's it? Okay, I need to get a new router, but till then, please bear with me. Okay, so where did you lose me? So?
Lost you once again, right when you're about to tell us what is that you're looking for.
You might turn off your video.
Okay, you know what? I think Ray might remember what I was looking for.
Or connect with your cell phone. Actually, just.
Although even the cell phone reception is not that great here, you know. So essentially what I'm looking for is something that says what, what the current state of the regulation is. What do we need to meet the requirement of the new state law? And how, how things would change compared to where we are for whatever extra we want to put.
So I.
Did people hear me?
You cut out again at the end, but. I guess I just want to understand for, for the sake of staff, also the attorney's office as well, is what additional information to, to reflect the, the state requirements? Because we do have, we have the draft ordinance that kind of shows the existing requirements and it's stricken, stricken with the new language. So that kind of shows it before and after. We also have slides that, that indicated, also the staff report as well, the SB 946 requirements, what it does allow, what it doesn't allow. So some of that, it's already discussed in the staff report. So I'd like to understand a little bit more. So if you do come back, we can provide you exactly what you need.
Okay, so it was my understanding that the SB 946 changes were just for the, the sidewalk vendors. Is that correct? And, and, and it's, we're simply following the law and making the adjustments that we are required to. That, that's one item. And then we have the separate item, which is regarding the, the mobile trucks, the, the food trucks, goods and services trucks. So that's kind of a separate issue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's correct. You had the sidewalk vendors and like you say, Chair, you have, we have a table that has allow, not allow. And then a separate category, like you mentioned about motorized vendors, that's correct.
Okay, Commissioner Fang?
So I, you know, yeah, I would, I would agree. I think that, you know, there's, there's a task, administrative task of making sure the ordinances are updated to be compliant with SB 946. You know, I support that. I think that, I think that the proposal before us is over restrictive in a number of areas, particularly the one that, that really jumped down, and I think that jumped out for a number of people here, was the very tight restriction on commercial service, on mobile services that are on the land of a commercial, you know, non-residential user who wants them there. So I'm actually opposed to that. I think that, you know, that, that was one example. I think the other one was around the very short time restrictions for conducting business. If there was really a problem here that, you know, people were, I don't know, you know, hanging out for a half hour and that this was really a nuisance, that would be one, it would be one thing. There would be a reason to consider, you know, these very, very short time limits. Otherwise, I think that, that something not nearly that restrictive makes a lot more sense. I think that there would probably be, the one area that wasn't focused on here that might be, that might be reasonable is that I, my sense in reading this, and I said this before, I think that there's a problem here in Cupertino where there's just a general kind of knee jerk reaction to, you know, to minimizing the, minimizing what's allowed to the absolute minimum, minimum that legally can be pursued. I don't really see the point in that. If, if this is, for instance, to address a nuisance, if there was a problem with too many sidewalk vendors or too many mobile vendors, then a more productive way to go on this would really be to look at, you know, I think that the question was raised about somebody who would like to come to the same place every day. I mean, you know, this is very common for a food truck to want to be at a place where they, you know, you expect to find them at a certain day or a certain time. So I would look at things, for instance, you know, I would hope one element would look at, are there areas in town? It's almost like zoning. Are there areas in town where somebody can apply for a recurring license? As opposed to, you know, the kind of general rules we have that make it restrictive kind of everywhere in town. So I think that that would be a positive addition and something that, that I would ask staff to go back and look at. I think that in general, I don't know that I hear that there's a huge problem with, with mobile services. I think there were spot problems in the past that, I, I don't know why. I mean, the hair cutting, the hair cutting truck at the Results Way campus, Apple's Result Way campus, seemed to get a lot of mention in, in the past. But I think that, you know, and Commissioner Takahashi mentioned this along the way. There are issues that are associated with any conditional use. We should address those when those become real issues as opposed to trying to anticipate, you know, some, some, in this case overly restrictive solution. And so that's generally our bad. I don't know whether the feeling of the commission here would be to try to do a partial, you know, 946 only a kind of, kind of resolution or whether, you know, or whether we wanted to just vote the whole thing down. But, you know, I, I'm interested in seeing what other people think and hopefully we can find a good solution. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Fang. Would somebody else like to comment? And I could say, I'll just reveal, you know, I'm, I'm for the partial, the SB 946 and finding out some more information. And I, and I think we could actually add in the plastic alternatives, single-use plastics. Commissioner, Vice Chair Wong.
So, look, we have to do the 946 part. I totally get it. And I understand why we were trying to take something more comprehensive and I understand why staff was trying to do that. I'm probably for purposes of expedited, you know, being more expedited. I agree that's at least separate the 946 part and get that out. But, but what I do want to see though is some creativity. And this is going to, and it's not an art restriction, but if economic development said, we're going to designate three zones in Cupertino and these three zones are going to be food truck heaven, right? And you can apply for a permit and that permit fee is going to pay for waste disposal. It's going to pay for some safety. It's going to pay for some facilities. And, you know, food trucks come in and apply and just come in on out. And we're going to capture the tax revenue using square with location-based technologies so that we can get the tax revenue at that point in time and set that up as a location? I'd be like, that's awesome. Let's do it. Let's get some rules so these folks know what to do, right? And then we could get behind that. And then the second thing was like, you know, our restaurants need different delivery mechanisms and modes. And maybe they can't all open up. So maybe we can, you know, have them figure out how to get a food truck so that they can actually, you know, bring Cupertino stuff to Cupertino residents. And, you know, they're the ones that, I know we can't restrict, you know, the, the number or whatever. But, you know, you could make it easier for the Cupertino restaurants who aren't going to open up again to actually have a shot. Perfect. Great economic development idea. Let's go for it. Right? So that's the part where I think we can actually then apply all the lessons learned here by staff and whatever high-paid consultant. They're not that high-paid. I'm just kidding. But whatever consultant was, was put on this job so that we can just reuse learnings and quickly come up with policies that can support an economic goal. Right? If there's anything, and if I'm, if I'm still on this commission in the next year, couple of years, I mean, I want to align our business, our, our business plan with, with our policy. Like, we're all over the freaking map. I mean, it's, it's like, like, I don't even know why we're doing half the things. Got to have a business policy. And if the policy is like, we need to increase our tax base and these are five ways to do it, then we should put regulations in place. Right? And, and back to Alan's point, like, and I think I'm going to ask this question almost in every meeting going forward. What's the volume? What's the volume of the complaint? Right? If it's like five or seven or like 30 of these, like, okay. If we suddenly get a rash of food trucks and like 40, 50 of them are showing up every month and we have no idea what to do with them, we have no rules? All right, yeah, let's go do something. And so I think we need to put some proportionality to our response when we actually spend some time on these things. But, but here's the good news. We've, you guys have spent some time thinking about it. We figured out, hey, here are all the possibilities. We've argued up every single possibility and use case scenario. If we actually have a plan that we're going to go against, let's go build it. I think we have the expertise. You could actually whip it up in less than a week or two and we could pass and go. So anyways, that's just my thoughts, but I'm happy to break it up and vote for the broken up portion so that we were compliant.
Quick question, Vice Chair Wong. Could you summarize if you were, if you were to ask for additional information, what would it be exactly?
I really want to know, like, and I don't know if the chamber is the right place to do this. I mean, it's been so politicized. But I, I really want to know how many small businesses like really want to do something and, 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 you know, what their feelings are. Because the small businesses are getting crushed and, and they're like, oh my God, we need help. Please protect us. Let's definitely help them. Right? And if they see this as an opportunity to actually build something and, and the regulations will, are simple enough for them to say, oh, go, it's a $150 permit. These are the seven steps to get there. We're going to help you be successful. And by the way, you know, we're looking at sites that we can potentially put your food truck in so that you can help out. Or maybe your landlord might, might want to be open up, you know, have like three or four spots, you know, like that, I don't know, like that Lion Plaza, wherever that thing is. You know, like somewhere on Bollinger, right? I mean, that mall's probably dead right now, right? Maybe put like seven trucks there. People show up there on a regular basis. The owners of the stores that couldn't do anything. Let's just deck it out and then put some food trucks out there. I mean, something like that, then I think that makes sense. So I want to know if there's demand. I want to know what, what people's interests are, right? And then, then we can put a, put a plan around it. And I think that's awesome. So.
Okay. If I could comment back on Commissioner Wong's note there, you know, so I, I have a, you know, an association with the Chamber of Commerce. One of the people, one of the active people in Chamber of Commerce was Kevin McClellan for a long time. He actually specifically consults on, you know, restaurants and, and food, food businesses. And so it's an interesting thing. I remember him talking about the fact that the problem is that overregulation, when you want to have a stationary restaurant, has actually caused it very, very difficult. It's made it very, very difficult and expensive, you know. We had examples here where I think one of, probably one of the first approvals of this, of this commission was, you know, the restaurant that was going to be the other side next to, you know, next to Stein's in D'Abio Zero and never opened. Because there's too many restrictions, too much cost. You see this all over the place. So, so I definitely, I mean, I think that it's interesting. In Kevin's case, he'd actually said that he actually recommended for people who are entrepreneurial. Because people who like to, because chefs are generally not great businessmen. For people entrepreneurial, food trucks make better sense. So, yeah, I definitely agree. I mean, I think that with, with Ray's comment, you know, if we really want to do this, then what are the ways in which you create an incentive to do that? And that, you know, particularly, you know, I, I had mentioned before that Gilroy had a problem with food trucks in their downtown area because of the, because of the high cost of, you know, of a lease for fixed restaurants. You know, we don't have that problem in Cupertino. We don't have a downtown. So, yeah, if there's opportunities to identify a place, whether it's a parking lot or, or, you know, over in a certain area, those, those may be, there are certainly opportunities to create incentives that could be very successful at bringing, you know, some variety and some money to the city. Just not, you know, it doesn't happen to be embodied in this, in the proposal before us. And, and then again, I will also say that, you know, that, that same, that same sense of, there are incentives that can make, make things happen. You know, that does apply for things beyond food trucks as well. And this is a, you know, we are very polarized on things like land use here. Many of those things, same things apply. If you want to get housing, you can get it by creating incentives, by saying, hey, in this zone, we want to try to do something more. Right? And, you know, I think that a lot of the flavor of what I see in, in the proposal that came forward today, and, and, you know, again, this is very different than what it was, you know, four years ago. You know, is very much the, well, we've got a charter here that's sort of to restrict things as much as possible, regardless of whether it makes sense or not. So, you know, I just, I don't think that that's a good way. I mean, it's something you can do, but it's, it's not a good way to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Fang. Would someone else care to speak at this time?
Well, I rebooted my router, so hopefully it works this time. Third time lucky. So, yes. Ben was asking what I was needing. I basically, what I don't have right now is an understanding of the baseline in the sense that, right now, if you need to have a food truck, from what I heard, it has to come to the planning commission. And I guess to be compliant with the new law, that requirement will go away. I think if you could have at least some idea about what we are changing to get compliant with the new law, that would help. And if you're going to be doing anything extra, we'll especially call that out and the motivation behind it. And I would agree with Commissioner Wong and Commissioner Fang that, you know, we should be encouraging local businesses, helping them out. And anything more we put in, in terms of regulations should be guided by those principles and not just be put there for the sake of them putting there. That's all. So Commissioner Moore, coming back to you, I'll be supportive of doing the minimum required to support to meet the state requirements. But anything more, we should probably have a discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, I feel like I have enough information, but I'll support what the commission wants to do in terms of if we want to piece this out. I, I don't think it's an issue in terms of where we're at right now with regard to the volume of mobile businesses and food trucks. It is or has been a trend that has gained some traction from the standpoint of, you know, with the mobile services especially. Given the COVID environment, I think it's, it's, it's been an attractive thing for, for some people to use and avoid contact as much as possible. So I think it's something that we should put in place, common sense elements, which I think were presented to us in terms of ours. Those are all pretty reasonable. In terms of assessing what the other cities were doing and, and being consistent with that. I think all that is pretty straightforward. And if in the future we feel like there are issues, let's address those. I will bring up the sustainability. I think that, that was a, an interesting point that was brought up. And unfortunately, an outcome of the pandemic is a bone to plastics given takeout. But some element of, you know, like, it's like straws. Don't give us, don't give me a straw if I don't want a straw, right? So, so something that at least makes mobile food truck vendors aware that, that we are trying to make a difference in that regard and that not just making assumptions and stuffing a lot of plastic into the packaging. With regard to the other concerns. With regard to the other concerns that were brought up, service on private commercial, for example, I I do feel like that should be allowed and not be restricted. And I guess I think the challenge that we're going to have now is if we if we say we're going to break this up, you know, how exactly do we go about doing that in terms of how, what was what's been proposed? And drafting that, is that something that can be done tonight, or does it have to come back to be able to do that? So that's my perspective.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Takahashi. I think that's a really great question about how you would be able to break that up. I think that would be a challenge. You you mentioned something about limitations on private property and and not having that. Does that mean? I I believe the limitation that we have is three, three trucks? Is that correct? Do we have that limitation in the in our ordinance?
This proposal was no mobile services.
Right.
Commercial.
No. Okay.
That's separate from food.
Right.
Okay, so it's it's three, three food trucks?
Yeah.
But with with regards to mobile services on on a private commercial locations, what what's the rule on that?
The proposal was for none.
For none, oh. So you couldn't have a dentist. So I'm seeing this in other areas where there's a mobile dentist which shows up at a at a commercial area. So we're saying that that wouldn't wouldn't be allowed at all.
Would not even be allowed on a, on if if you had a, suppose you had a company with twenty thousand employees, and you decided to invite it to your, you know, to be in your private parking lot, you still can't do it then.
But huh, so there have been other services, you know, for people. I think you can have like a mobile oil oil change at, you know, some other, in some other cities on onsite. Of course, we're, you know, we're trying to move away from gas to electric and hydrogen, but hydrogen fuel cell. But that would also be considered a kind of a service that would not would not be allowed as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, could staff first give us an opinion about whether or not we can pull apart the SB nine-four-six components easily and do that tonight, or is that something that would need to come back? And Seth?
Actually, if if I could ask a different question related to that, this was scheduled to go to council in December. Is there a problem if it doesn't?
No, there's no problem.
Nine-four-six?
No, there's no problem if it doesn't. It's just that it's been on the, we're programmed by the city councils. We want to make sure we hit we hit certain deadlines, and it's already kind of delayed because of the SB nine-four-six introduction.
Yeah.
I can, I, these two issues relate to one another. So you're 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 considering an ordinance here that includes an amendment, proposed amendment to the zoning code, zoning ordinance. And so you're you're sort of governed by state law here in that you have to make a recommendation one way or the other to the council. You can't just choose to send certain parts back to staff and send forward another. So and that recommendation furthermore has to be written. So we'll have to sort of include the the motion as proposed, and you can make modifications to part two of the of the motion and include whatever you want to say. Council, we don't recommend you go forward with this part, but we want you to go forward with SB, this state law component.
Okay, so the whole, are you saying that the the whole thing is moving forward? We're not, we cannot get more information? So is that correct?
It has to move forward under state law. Council could, you know, de-agendize the meeting if they wanted to wait. But we don't have a a choice right now not to move it forward. Staff could choose to look into these issues in the meantime so that they can be.
Okay, so could you give, could you give us some language around moving the components to this ordinance for SB nine-four-six, moving that forward? And not the 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 second part regarding the the service, service trucks and the goods and food trucks? And that we would let the city council know that there are, there's certain extra information that we would like them to have included since it's not going to be coming back to us?
I I think that's a question for all of staff here, probably need to convene about that. But in my opinion, you've just said it short. And the only part you want to clarify is what parts you want more information about.
Okay, thank you. Do we have some consensus among the commission that that is what we want to do? So.
So the alternative, the alternative, one alternative to this would be to ask the staff to come back, redraft the the resolution just encompassing the recommendations to come for compliance with SB nine-four-six. And and then as a separate item, to come back with the the rest of the economic development plan issues. I think I would prefer to see that if we can, if that's an, if that's an alternative, which may include voting down the resolution we have today.
Seth, was was that an option? I I thought I understood that we need to move, put, move this whole thing forward.
And that, as I understood, the commissioner, that would be, that would be your recommendation to the to the council. So you'd recommend moving forward with SB nine-four-six components and waiting for further information on the on the the rest. Of course, council could act one way or the other on the recommendation. My, the the point is that you can't just stop the buck here with the non-SB nine-four-six components. They have to be part of a recommendation.
Or or we could stop the entire thing.
You could recommend denial.
Yeah.
Of the whole thing.
Yeah.
I had a question. What's the deadline for us to become compliant with the state law?
This is Pewcoach Planning Manager. I can answer that if Chair Moore would allow me to. There is no deadline for compliance with state law. We already are, have to be today compliant with state law. We just don't have any regulations. So whatever state law allows us to do, that's what we have. We just don't have any parameters around that.
So, so before the law came into picture, we needed a planning commission approval for a truck, but now with the law, we don't need it anymore, or but they don't need it anymore?
State law only provides certain very big picture parameters. They don't necessarily have specifics. And so as long as a vendor complies with those, they can operate today within the city. And state, I believe the state law was written in, well, adopted in like October last year, sometime late last year. So it's just a matter of kind of coming into compliance with it and coming up with our own rules about it.
Would a better way to to phrase that be the example of if the city had had a law which which prohibited sidewalk vendors? That that the new, the state law now overrides that, and we would need to take an action at some point, just to clarify the city, the city's law, is that, is that, so anything that's in SB SB nine-four-six, any regulation or any requirement that's brought in is in effect today already. Is that correct?
Correct. Anything that we're not in, where we conflict with state law, state law would preempt us.
Yeah.
So the way it is right now, if somebody has to have a food truck, they won't have to come to the planning commission. Would that be great? Would that be?
It does not cover food trucks. It only covers sidewalk vendors.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And a food and a food truck previously would require permits, and they still require those permits.
At this time, yes, they would be used for a planning commission, correct?
So if we could, I'm muted. It says I'm muted. Okay, so we could, we could move that we recommend that city council adopt an ordinance to amend chapter five-point-oh-four Business License Generally, chapter five-point-two-zero Solicitors, chapter five-point-four-eight Mobile Vendors, chapter eleven-point-two-eight Miscellaneous Parking Regulations On Street Parking, chapter thirteen-point-oh-four Parks, and chapter nineteen-point-one-hundred Accessory Uses In Buildings Structures For Mobile Vendor Regulations only for those portions which are directly related to SB nine-four-six. And that we recommend for denial those portions not directly related to SB nine-four-six. And that we find the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under California Environmental Quality Act Guideline Section fifteen-three-seven-eight. And that we adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code, which are in accordance with SB nine-four-six only, with the findings reflected in the proposed ordinance, which the planning commission makes as though set forth in their entirety in this resolution. So that is my motion. Do I have a second? And do you want to add to it?
Did you write, did you happen to take that down while you were saying it? I want to make sure we're we're all in agreement on this language. And and just, I'll propose as well, another way to do it would be to deny in 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 the in the entirety, which I think Commissioner Fang brought up. And then in your rationale, you include what you would do, rather than kind of cutting it in half.
Okay, so then we, I don't have a second, so that.
So, yeah, let me, let me, let me make a motion on the other.
You have to make a motion, I'll second that, yeah.
I I I made a motion on, this is actually the first page of the draft resolution, which I read the the first paragraph of the opening sentence of item one, the SEQA guideline section, and gave the number. And then the the nearly the full paragraph of item two, up to the items set forth in their entirety in this resolution. So that that's, if you want to find, you know, where I grabbed that from. Commissioner Fang?
I would just say that, you know, without without partitioning, without actually partitioning the things, I feel like it's difficult to vote on that with whether, you know, whether we've really given it true consideration or not. You know, as an alternative, I would be willing to make a motion that really denies the entire thing, but comes with a recommendation both to staff and to the council. But we we should play this one out first, decide what we want to do here.
Okay, well, I think all I'm trying to say is that we we want them, we need to, and we want them to move ahead with the SB nine-four-six requirements, which we have to be in compliance with. And then recommend for denial the the rest. So I I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen the other, I think.
Well, but we're not, we're not time critical, you know, we're not really time critical on on having to have SB nine-four-six compliant because we we are by by default already. So I think that the the interesting question is if we want to resolve the the, you know, the city, the municipal code to be fully in compliance with SB nine-four-six, then we should just deny it now and have have just that portion come back in the future. Along with, and, you know, then separately from that, to bring the other elements of the that that were being proposed here, you know, with the changes that that have been discussed.
I would, Chair, if I may. Sorry, Vice Chair. Really quick, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. Chair, if I may, I believe you made a valid motion, and I believe the Vice Chair has seconded that motion. So I will suggest you you vote, and then if if that fails, then you can think of an alternative motion. Sorry, sorry, Vice Chair, please.
Okay, thank you. So we're deliberating on on the motion right now. Vice Chair Wong?
Yeah, so, I mean, I I'm understanding, I do understand Commissioner Fang's point, right? If we do nothing, we're, it's not like we're out of compliance, right? And they can come back with whatever we need to meet state law by that point. So so that is interesting to me. I just, I just went over the comparison chart again of cities and what other cities are doing. And I just want to clarify the argument that was made is like, we need to do something because we are inconsistent with other cities. And just looking at the chart, every city is inconsistent. So I'm not sure if if we're going to lead the way. Like, you know, if we're going to lead the way, we might as well just contact the other cities and say, hey, what are you guys doing? Do you want to be consistent? And and then go and do it at the same time, too. So if we're going to take this back, I mean, I think that's one way to do that, if you want the consistency. But if you don't want to be consistent with other cities and create an advantage for Cupertino or create an advantage for the, you know, the the businesses in Cupertino, then we can go back and rethink how we want to do this, right? And it doesn't matter that we're consistent or not. And so so I just want to be clear that being consistent with another city, to me, is is not really a good reason, right? But if you want to create some advantages for our city, for our businesses in our city, then I'm all for it. Let me know. I mean, find the ones that you think are going to kick butt, and let's go do it, and and let the businesses be successful. But to the purpose of to stay germane on this motion, I mean, I'm okay with splitting it, and I'm also okay with waiting. So just just so you know, I'm, I'll go with what you guys decide.
Okay, and my concern is that we protect our local, our protect our local businesses here, especially since it's going to be, you know, a difficult couple of years that we're looking at. So I don't want to do anything that's going to cause unintended consequences of harm to our own local businesses. So, you know, that is what what's behind my thinking there. And I would like that attachment. I think it might be attachment C. It's the one that we pulled up. I'd like to see that when it goes to the city council, I'd like to see that in their, in their staff report. So they're, they're not left digging for it, because I think it's really important to see the comparisons with the other cities' policies. Yeah, oh, it's a attachment three. So if we could put the existing policies in neighboring cities in there, just as a, make it a little bit easier for them, I think that would help. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? If not, then we can go to a vote. I'm not seeing any hands raised. All right.
Chair Moore?
Yes. I'm not sure who just spoke.
Me and Commissioner Fang.
We did, we just did it again.
I don't want to, go ahead, Commissioner Fang, I just have a.
I was just saying that that you were raising your hand.
Oh, thank, thank you. I, for clarity's sake, just because this is a little confusing, and we're trying to comply with state law, I wonder if you would do us all the favor of reading your motion again, since you you read it from your, the page.
Okay, I, okay, so I move that we recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance to amend chapter five-point-zero-four Business Licenses Generally, chapter five-point-two-zero Solicitors, chapter five-point-four-eight Mobile Vendors, chapter eleven-point-two-eight Miscellaneous Parking Regulations On Street Parking, chapter thirteen-point-oh-four Parks, and chapter nineteen-point-one-hundred Accessory Uses And Buildings Structures For Mobile Vendor Regulations. How do I say it? I'm in support, in accordance with SB nine-four-six and accepting portions which are not directly applicable to SB nine-four-six. And we find that the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Guideline Section fifteen-three-seven-eight and to adopt the proposed amendments to the municipal code with the findings reflected in the proposed ordinance, which the planning commission makes as though set forth in their entirety in this resolution as applicable to SB nine-four-six only.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before there's a vote, would would you mind if staff just confirms quickly, and I have a chance to speak with Sarah Lucy, who took the legal reins on this item?
Absolutely.
Thanks. I don't know if that requires pausing the meeting briefly, but.
Yeah, so I would recommend.
Chair, can we take a bio break?
Okay, five-minute break. Right now, it is ten-fourteen, so we'll be back at ten-nineteen. All right, thank you. Take a break.